Thank you. Before we begin this meeting, we ask that everyone silence your cellphones. The Fort Ben ISD Board of Trustees meeting is an open meeting for the public to observe the board conducting district business. Therefore, audience members may address the board during the designated Audience Items section on the agenda. If you have any printed materials you want to give to the board members, you must provide them to the Board Secretary Norma Perez or to me, and we will provide them to the board. We also ask the members of the audience be respectful of others, remain quiet during the meeting so that everyone is able to hear the proceedings. For your convenience, microphones have been provided on both sides of the boardroom. Please speak directly into the microphone if you're asked to answer a question or address the board during the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Officer Otteferros. The time is 6:03 PM, and this meeting is hereby called to order. We have the presence of a quorum, and the meeting has been duly called and notice of the meeting has been posted for the time and manner required by law. If you all will please join us in standing for the pledges of allegiance and remain standing for a silent invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I am the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Please remain standing for a silent invocation. You may be seated. First up this evening are recognitions. Dr. Dupree.
Thank you, Madam President. If the board would join me in front of the dais, it's a great evening to celebrate accomplishments of our outstanding staff and students.
Madam President, Superintendent members of the board, first I'd like to introduce two awesome students that we have from Fort Settlement Middle School. Can I please ask Aspen Bilton in eighth grade and Tyler Jackson, seventh grade, to come forward and shake hands with the board? Aspen is the Fort Ben ISD's 2017 first-place best actress and 2018 first-place slam poetry winner. She's a member of the National Junior Honor Society and holds the Public Relations Office and co-captain of the Fort Settlement Cheer Team. And Tyler is active in the Kickstart Program in Teen Leadership. He's also a Boy Scout, and he's known for excellent character and patriotic spirit. Thank you both for being here. At this point, I would like to turn it over to Michael Madden for the Student Leadership 101 Program recognition.
Board President Tossen, members of the board, Dr. Dupree. Tonight, we are proud to recognize the students who were selected to participate in the 2017-2018 Student Leadership 101 Program. This cohort represents a significant milestone. Proudly, this year marks the 10th anniversary of your student leadership program. Thank you all for your continual support of this program. Thank you for the time that you have spent with the cohort and the wisdom you have imparted. The lives of these cohort members and so many before them have been changed forever. Thank you all. The purpose of the Student Leadership 101 Program is to develop students as leaders by providing experiences with various community leaders. The board sponsors this program by providing junior and senior-level students from all Fort Ben ISD high schools with opportunities to develop and demonstrate their leadership skills while at the same time being involved in volunteer service. Board members attend each seminar and share their leadership experiences and their relation to the attributes of the profile of a graduate. The board has helped these students become partners for positive change in our community. This year, these students traveled throughout Fort Ben County engaging the people who lead and shape the community in which we live. Many of these cohort members even made a trip to Washington, DC in March to see leadership on the federal level. Seeing leadership in action and identifying within these leaders the attributes of the profile of a graduate was an empowering experience for all who participated. Through these uniquely crafted seminars, cohort members were inspired and equipped to take ownership of their own leadership development. Many here tonight have taken part in their journey and have seen the tremendous growth that they have made. As these students continue to grow as leaders and continue to aspire to reach the attributes that make up the profile of a graduate, they will become the people who lead and shape this district and our community in ways they never could have imagined. Please help us recognize and congratulate the Student Leadership 101 Cohort. From Austin High School, we have Zabir Islam, Ed Hat Jaffrey, Sharista Rohila, from Bush High School, not able to make it tonight, Faith Agba, Sobea Syed, and Catherine Wooton. From Clements High School, Archie Anad, Tara Shabir, and Elizabeth Tillman. Cohort members representing Dulles High School, Rivali Bavaraju, Victoria Chan, and Alexandra Sepulveda. Representing Elkins High School, Joseph Babu, Anu Cherakura, and Mason Hoover. Representing Hightower High School, Guthari James, Hafsa Moiz, and unable to make it tonight, Ogetcha Kanma Oko. Representing Kipner High School, we have Jennifer Agoo, Helen Nguyen, and Alexandria Nage. From Marshall High School, we have Peace Ida Uza and Abraham Lopez. Representing Ridge Point High School, we have Abigail Boriga. Not able to join us this evening is Avery Byrne and Valerie Emma Oku. From Travis High School, we have Kevin Hulipus, Axel Jakonaya, and Anish Shakavaram. And from Willridge High School, we have Melissa Marquez, Ashley McNeil, who is unable to join us, and Angel Medina Jr. And to all of the parents in the audience tonight, a big thank you for the opportunity to take part in this journey with your children. Watching them grow over the course of this year has been inspiring and an honor. We thank you. And now, members of the cohort would like to present the board with a small token of their appreciation. Cohort, come in and let's get a picture.
Thank you, and congratulations to the Student Leadership 101 Cohort. Next, we have an awesome group from Quell Valley Gifted and Talented Academy. These students won the Best Virtual City Design at the Future City National Competition in Washington, DC. When I call your names, students, if you'll go ahead and start on this side and we'll shake hands, then we'll get together for group picture like we did. Okay? Very good. We're going to start with Ishan Katie, Samarth Bahad, Anshumi Jay Barry, Yashna Chukwepu, Shweta Katie. Congratulations to this group. And thank you to all of our supporters, staff, and parents from Quell Valley Gifted and Talented Academy. Let's go ahead and get a group picture. Good job. Congratulations one more time. Next, we have the Dulles High School Academic Decathlon who won first place for a second consecutive 6A state title. I'm going to give you some information about this amazing team. Together, the team won 27 individual event medals, $17,000 in scholarships, first-place SuperQuiz, and broke the Fort Ben ISD record with a score of 52,114.4 points. This score, that's impressive. And I'd like to add that this score is the eighth highest score in the 35-year history of the Texas Academic Decathlon. Congratulations, guys. First, I'd like to introduce Sophie Yangy, event medals in art, literature, math, music, social science, and SuperQuiz. Jeffrey Shang, event medals in literature, SuperQuiz, and a perfect score in math. Vonnie Valour, event medals in math and SuperQuiz. Logan House, event medals in math and SuperQuiz. Matthew Gabino, event medal in SuperQuiz. Tejas Tupera, event medal in SuperQuiz. Samuel Lewis Steinman Friedman, first overall scholastic with the fourth highest scholastic score in Texas history, as well as event medals in art, econ, math, music, science, social science, SuperQuiz, and a perfect score in speech. Next, we have Moiz Tariq, fifth-place overall scholastic, as well as event medals in economics, interview, literature, math, science, social science, and SuperQuiz. And Leighton Naylander, second-place overall varsity, as well as event medals in economics, literature, music, science, social science, and SuperQuiz. And I'd like to introduce two of our awesome staff members, coaches Kelsey Healthin and Andrew Hartman. Thank you to all of our staff and parents at Dulles High School for supporting our students. Let's give them another round of applause. And we're going to do another group picture. Thank you, Dulles High School. Congratulations. Next, we have a staff recognition from Barrington Place Elementary, Ms. Kelly Rose. If you could please come up, our school nurse. She's been recognized for two state-level awards. The first is the Texas Action for Healthy Kids Heroes Award and the Department of State Health Services Reaching for Excellence Award. She was recently recognized for both of these awards at the Texas Action for Healthy Kids Summit at the United Way of Greater Houston. Thank you so much for all you do for all of our students. And thank you to all of our supporters from Barrington Place Elementary. Let's give them a round of applause. Next, we have an award for the district and for an individual. The Texas Department of Defense Employer Support of the Garden Reserve, which is the ESGR, was awarded to Fort Ben ISD, and we have Yvette McLendon here to present the award. And this award recognizes employers at the local level who go above and beyond to support our Uniformed Services Employment and Reemployment Rights Act by providing the Guard and Reserve employees additional non-mandated benefits. So we appreciate her being here to present that award. She's got two awards, so she's going to go ahead and give the district one first.
It is indeed my honor to be here tonight. My name is Yvette McLendon, and you'll have to pardon my raspy voice. I was hoping to have a colleague with me to speak, but I will do my best, so please bear with me. Again, my name is Yvette McLendon. I am an area chair with the Employer Support of the Garden Reserve, and one of my favorite parts of my volunteering for this organization is what I'm doing right now, making award presentations. And we have two tonight, and I'll explain the first one. The first one goes directly to the supervisor of the service member who nominated them because of their over and beyond support of them. As most of you know, that our military right now is right around the halfway mark in percentage of drawing from the Garden Reserve components for deployment. They no longer are using the full-time for deployments as much, so they're relying on the Garden Reserve components. And when that happens, those who are serving work full-time jobs, they can be deployed at a moment's notice, and when that happens, that leaves a void in their place of employment. And what I want to impart to all of you today is, you may not be the ones wearing that uniform, and you may not be the ones going and leaving family and friends and your jobs to go serve our country, but may I tell all of you here tonight in this room, you are important, very important to this circumstance because you too serve. And I'd like all of you to take a moment, put your hand over your heart, and say, "I serve too." You do, and I appreciate that. So tonight, on behalf of Captain Janine Holliday, and she gives her deepest regrets that she is not able to be here, but Prime Example, she is preparing to deploy yet again. So I want to read to you what she has written, and if I could get Ms. Jerry Cameraman, if you'll please step up here. I'm going to go ahead and read this for her. This is to her, on behalf of Captain Holliday, and this is what she has to say about you. Principal Cameraman is one of the most extraordinary people that I've ever met in my lifetime. She goes above and beyond to make sure that all of her employees are fully present, trained, and prepared, especially service members. She truly cares for each person that is responsible for leading. For example, she can tell when we are sick, she can tell when we need extra time to understand a difficult concept, and she can tell when we need one-to-one mentoring for support in accomplishing the impossible. Not only does Principal Cameraman understand the value of knowing the emotional intelligence of her employees, but she also cares about our extended family's needs and personal career aspirations. As a Reserve soldier, Principal Cameraman has helped me in all of the aforementioned facets. Just recently, I was transferred to a newly-formed MCP OD with the 27th Infantry Division in Hawaii. Knowing this new duty post would require more time off work, Principal Cameraman eagerly gave me guidance on how to prepare for my upcoming battle assemblies and RSTs that required upwards of over a week away from my job. Additionally, she encouraged and mentored me in helping me to understand that I am a valuable asset to our school district as a dual-career employee, and that she and the school would make sure that everything is taken care of for me at work, even if I have to deploy on a moment's notice. It is supervisors like Principal Cameraman that lead by example who motivate me to work hard, stay focused, and accomplish the mission no matter where I am at in the world. Her leadership skills and strength help me to understand the power of being a strong leader that sets a clear path for others to follow. And most important, Principal Cameraman goes above and beyond helping others understand the value of both retired and active-duty service members by bringing awareness to the necessity of dual-career employees in a civilian workforce. And I have to say hats off to you because that was very well-written and from the heart, and that's why I'm here today, is to be able to present you on behalf of Employer Support of the Garden Reserve and Captain Holliday as a patriotic employer. I'm going to pin her a patriot, if this pin will work. Well, they have had a problem with these, and it's... This next award, and let me explain again, the one that Principal Cameraman received, and I'm sorry, my back is turned to all of you. The award that she received is a district-level award going directly to the frontline supervisor, again, of the service member who nominated them. And because of the way the nomination was written and incorporating so well from the heart, all that the Fort Ben ISD does to support your men and women in uniform, and also, this is not the first Patriot Award I've been honored to come out and present. I was able to come out and present one of those awards to Dr. Dupree. I'll get it out in a moment, I should remember that, just last year. So because of having more than one Patriot Award awarded within this district, and the way that Captain Holliday so amply wrote out her citation, our awards committee immediately knew that this facility and this organization deserved yet another award. And this award is called the Above and Beyond. It doesn't go to just the frontline supervisor, it goes to the entire Fort Ben Independent School District. So this goes to all of you for your service in standing behind your men and women in uniform, and this one is also a district-level award. And while we're on awards, I'd like to encourage all of you to know that you guys, because of being able to get this particular award, it puts you in the running for the next-level award, which is called the Pro Patria Award. That is a state-level award. It is very prestigious to receive. It also is harder to receive because every state is typically allowed three to hand out. Texas and California, because of our size, are allowed six. Doesn't mean six are given because there is criteria to be met. But we can tell based on what we feel here and what we see from how you all operate that this organization is very much deserving of a Pro Patria Award. So I'm going to encourage those powers that be to continue pressing on so that we can come back out with that state-level award for all of you. And so at this time, on behalf of Employer Support of the Garden Reserve and because of Captain Holliday's writings and all that you do, I would like to present this award to Fort Ben Independent School District. Mr. Dupree?
Absolutely. Well...
Thank you very much. We have one more recognition this evening from Sullivan Elementary School. I'd like to invite Principal Donna Wisnig and representatives from StanTech to come forward. They've got the LEED certification here they'd like to present. LEED, as you know, is the Leadership and Energy in Environmental Design, and this provides a rigorous third-party verification on resource efficiency for building projects. So congratulations to Sullivan Elementary School for this amazing recognition. And board, you'll notice we've got the recognition over here as well on the side. If you didn't get a chance to see it, we've... Right there, it's fine. Yeah, we're going to go ahead and squeeze over just a little bit so Rachel can get your picture. Thank you very much. Congratulations. That concludes our recognition for this evening.
All right. Thank you for those recognitions. How awesome to see all those students succeeding and our principals succeeding. So thanks to all of you for being here for that. Next up on our agenda are our Audience Items. We have several this evening, so we are going to... Please come up when I call your name. Ms. Helliger is going to time the speaker. Each speaker gets three minutes to speak, and Ms. Helliger will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. First up is Sue Ella Mueller. That microphone should be on right there. And Ms. Helliger will let you know when you have 30 seconds.
Hi. Thank you, guys, for letting me come and speak to you tonight. We've lined up three speakers for y'all tonight, and we want to share with you how you've inspired us in the past, how you are equipping us today, and what we imagine the future to be. When my family and I first moved to the Meadows, there were only a handful of houses, and the elementary school was under construction. I was the first kindergarten class at Meadows Elementary. The teachers there were the first to encourage me to write, which is now what I do for a living. I made lifelong friends there that were part of my wedding and are still my best friends today. So when my husband and I started looking for houses, moving to the Meadows, the place that inspired me and shaped me, that was a no-brainer. We moved just across the street from the elementary school. For my own kids, it was the best decision that we ever made. My oldest was diagnosed with dyslexia in first grade. With the strategies she learned from the reading specialist and the loving support she received from all her Meadows teachers, that same struggling child has earned more than $70,000 worth of academic scholarships over the past four years. In December, she'll graduate from a small private college with a 3.93 GPA and a teacher's degree. degree. Ask her, and she'll tell you. She chose education because she wants to give back exactly what she got from her teachers at Meadows: hope, encouragement, motivation, and inspiration. But here's the thing, my daughter's story, it's not unusual. Talk to almost any parent in this audience, and they're gonna tell you similar stories about all of the life skills their children learned. The FBISD mission is to inspire and equip all students to pursue futures beyond what they can imagine. Inspire, equip, imagine. Meadows Elementary has done that for thousands of children, and your teachers have also done that for us, and you've done that for us. You can see it in the state standardized testing scores all the way back to '74. Meadows has always exceeded standards and expectations. Pretty great for a school with nearly 45% of its students coming from economically disadvantaged homes, an accomplishment that very few schools are able to make. How do we do it? For that, you have to look at the big picture. It's a unique community. We know our neighbors' names, we know their children's names, we know their dogs' names. We walk our children to school together, we volunteer for swim team, baseball, PTO, school carnivals together. We put on the best Fourth of July parade around, and we line the streets to watch it go down as it ends at the elementary school. I can't walk in the city park without being stopped a handful of times to be greeted by my neighbors, my old kindergarten teacher, and my friends. The foundation for these relationships all point back to Meadows Elementary. Tear our school down, and you'll rip apart this amazing, unique community. Our children, especially the nearly 45% in need, will be swallowed up by larger classes, busing, longer commutes. Historically, as a community, we've supported you. Over the last four decades, we've voted to support eight separate bonds to help build this school district, including 90-plus new schools and building projects. And during that time, we haven't asked for much.
Time.
But we're asking you now, stand with us. Continue to inspire our community. Save Meadows Elementary.
Thank you. So I'm gonna ask the audience to refrain from applauding, just so that we have probably about an hour worth of comment. So if you guys don't mind, just let's refrain from applauding and let them get through their comments. Next up is Sophia Ibarra. And thank you for being here, ma'am. I don't know where she went.
My name is Sophia Ibarra, and I am a fifth grader at Meadows Elementary. I have attended Meadows since kindergarten, and Meadows has equipped me with skills for life. I'm the oldest of five, and two of my younger siblings currently attend Meadows with me. I hope the other two will have the chance to attend and experience the unique opportunities that Meadows offers. Meadows is truly a special place, and we deserve to be rebuilt. Meadows is a school like no other, located in the small city of Meadows Place. Our school and community work together hand in hand. Since everybody knows everybody, when someone is having a difficult time, the school and community step in to help support that family. We are compassionate citizens. Through the years, Meadows has taught me to be a servant leader. I am president of our school's chapter of the National Elementary Honor Society, and our school emphasizes service projects by providing volunteer opportunities for all students. Some of the service projects our school have done are a canned food and blanket drive, recycling markers, helping prepare for Old Town Meadows, the carnival for our city and school, caroling at the assisted living center in Meadows Place, and having a school supply drive for students in Mexico. We learned that to be a true leader, we must serve. Students at Meadows are given special opportunities to learn about the world around us. The city supports our school by providing special programs, including the nature center, a place where students can walk to for many field trips, the trout release where fish are put into the lake, the community garden where students learn and participate in gardening, and crocodile encounters, a program where students get to foster a crocodile or alligator for the school year. Other schools do not have all these opportunities. Since Meadows is so close to many of our homes, we learn independence and responsibility by walking or biking home by ourselves, often leading our younger siblings. If we do need an adult, we know where to find one we can trust, since we have such a small and close community. If we were rezoned, we would not learn its independence because we have to wait for our parents to pick us up or ride the bus. Meadows is more than a building, it is our community. As Meadows Place Mayor Charles Jessup says, "Meadows is the heartbeat of our city, and Meadows makes us lifelong learners and shapes who we will become. If you destroy Meadows, you also destroy part of us. Rebuild and keep us together. Your decision will impact all current and future generations of Fort Bend ISD students. I trust you to do what is right."
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next up, you did a great job. Next up is Brian Stevens, and then next will be Amy Holcomb. So just if Amy's here, she can get ready to be next.
Good evening, Board President, School Board members, Dr. Dupree. I'm not sure that I would do well on the TV show, am I smarter than a fifth grader? First, thank you for engaging over the last few weeks in the process. Being an open and engaging process exposes you to a lot of risk, and I do thoroughly appreciate the time that I've been able to spend with the few of that I have, and I recognize a few steering committee members this evening as well. My name is Brian Stevens. I'm almost a 20-year resident of Meadows Place. I'm a former band director here in Fort Bend ISD for about 14 years, and my wife and I have three children at Meadows Elementary. John Lennon's song Imagine was written in 1971. When that song was written, Fort Bend ISD was a rural school district with fewer than 10 campuses. The combined population of Sugar Land and Missouri City was under 10,000. First Colony, New Territory, Pecan Grove, and the other master-planned communities that now fill our school district were still farmland, and the Meadows was just a bedroom community. In 1973, Meadows Elementary was built in the center of our community as its anchor institution, thus making us the gateway community for Fort Bend ISD. The thoughts expressed in Lennon's song suggest the dream of a brotherhood of man, where people of all backgrounds come together to create a global community pushed forward by collaboration and understanding. Collaboration is a living, breathing organism that relies on trust. Trust speaks to the past, the present, and the future, as it is built up and perpetuated over time in the belief that those being trusted will do the right thing. This trusting relationship is itself a living organism where roles evolve with time and circumstance. At different times, we are all trustors and trustees. Over the past five decades, as trustors, the Meadows property taxes have been entrusted to Fort Bend ISD to help offset the costs presented by an ever-growing educational community. As trustees, we have been faithful and loyal in answering the district's call. Districts call eight different times for bonds to fund over 90 building projects. In all of this time, very little has been required or asked in the way of financial support for our community school. It is now time for us to ask for return on our investment. What we ask is that Fort Bend ISD invest in our community by providing a 21st-century learning center in a way that will allow our cultural and educational communities the abilities to continue thriving in an uninterrupted way. Helen Keller says, "I long to accomplish a great and noble task, but it is my chief duty to accomplish humble tasks as though they were great and noble. The world has moved along, not by the mighty shoves of its heroes, but by the aggregate of tiny pushes of each honest worker." The Meadows has been filling the aggregate, helping build and push Fort Bend ISD for the past five decades. Our little workers are inspired on a daily basis by their teachers, administrative and support staff. Equip them with their 21st-century learning community, and then watch out as they do what kids do best and imagine.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for being here. Amy Holcomb?
You'll have three minutes, and she'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining. Thank you very much. Dr. Dupree and Honorable Board Trustees, my name is Amy Holcomb, and this is my son, Hunter Holcomb. We reside in Fort Bend ISD, and Hunter attends Bowie Middle School. Hunter and I are here to speak on behalf of Kickstart Kids. First, we would like to thank you for bringing the program into the district and the schools. Then Hunter would like to give you a quick glimpse of how it's impacted him. The Kickstart Kids program has truly helped our family through a transition and helped Hunter find a new passion. I'm a proud Fort Bend ISD graduate from many years ago. I'm glad to see that the district still provides innovative and unique opportunities to its students. This is one reason why I chose the Fort Bend area when returning back from DFW.
My parents made the decision to move from the DFW area to Richmond in the summer of 2016. I had attended the same small IB school for six years and was unhappy about leaving behind all I knew. Met to Richmond, and off I went to Blue Bear Sixth Grade Orientation. It was there my instructor, Mr. Nunez, performed and talked about Kickstart. I was intrigued, and at that point, I wanted to be a part of the Kickstart program. Kickstart Kids has helped me in many ways, physically and mentally. It has taught me about the value of respect, it has given me confidence and self-esteem, and it has pushed me to new levels I didn't think were possible. My first year was tough, as I missed my old school and friends, but I had one thing to look forward to each day: fifth period, my Kickstart class. I took everything Mr. Nunez was teaching and loved it as it created a sense of belonging. I met so many people, creating many laughs, had my ego checked, and put in my place, and I found a new sport to love. I joined our demo team, attended tournaments, and I'll be competing for a Kickstart Kids state title this weekend. I was selected to perform at Chuck Norris's annual gala in two weeks and was named Student of the Year. Had it not been for the Kickstart program at Bowie, I would have not found my love and dedication to martial arts. Dr. Dupree and Honorable Trustees, thank you again for making Kickstart Kids a part of Fort Bend ISD. It has helped me become a better person and a stronger athlete. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all very much for being here, for sharing that. Next up is Mansi Mehta. Someone coming from outside? Mansi Mehta? M-E-H-T-A? Thank you for being here. You'll have three minutes, and she'll let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Okay. This will be pretty quick. Good evening, members of the Board, Dr. Dupree, and everyone here. My name is Mansi Mehta, and I'm with Region Four. Region Four recently got a grant from FEMA and SAMSA to serve people who are affected by Hurricane Harvey through counseling services and connecting them with resources available in the community. This grant lasts till the end of October, and we are hoping to not only reach residents, but also students and their families. And so one of the things I wanted to say is that we are not licensed clinicians, my crisis outreach workers, but we are here to empower those who are affected by Hurricane Harvey, help them build resilience, help them process their reactions, cope with stress, and prepare them for future disasters. And as we all know, traumas not only affect adults, but also children, often more deeply. We are hoping to partner with Fort Bend ISD, their counselors and social workers, and show students and families that someone cares about them, is there to listen and hear their stories. We acknowledge that the next couple months, they're start testing, as well as we're approaching the end of the school year. However, we're hoping that maybe even through the summer, that we can find some way to partner with the schools who were deeply affected and reach out to the students and their parents. And in addition, the Fort Bend Long-Term Recovery Group also has a branch called Fort Bend Recovers with Creativity, in which they will be celebrating the one-year anniversary of Hurricane Harvey on August 25th. And we are hoping to celebrate victims' resilience through art and creative, original works. And so through that, I'm hoping to, with my team, hoping to work with students, families, neighborhoods who were affected by Hurricane Harvey, and encourage them to produce original works that can be exhibited at this anniversary event. And I have spoken to the Fort Bend ISD Lead Social Worker, Breette Avantza, and we are waiting for a memorandum of agreement with Fort Bend ISD. And after that, we are just hoping that we can arrange something. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for coming and letting us know about that. Appreciate it. Next up is Russell Dench.
Very good, yes. Who am I gonna give some handouts to? My name is Russell Dench, and pretty easy, some of the handouts that you'll get on the upper-right portion for zoning to Ridge Point is, I have a piece of property where we live, it's a little over 13 acres, and my neighbors to the left, to the right, and behind me are zoned to Ridge Point. And I'm, when you get to the map, you'll see I'm actually cut out. You'll see the road go along Sycamore, and the boundary lines deviate, go around my property, go back north, and then over towards Rose and other streets over in Fresno. So once you get to the map, like to future contact with you guys in the future. I've tried in the past to get a reason why my property is actually cut out, and I can go on from there, but once you look at the maps, you'll see what I'm talking about. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Ms. Miller, you'll have three minutes, and Ms. Heliger will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Oh, I don't have anything yet. I do have it up.
I am here to speak in favor of saving both Lakeview and Sugar Mill Elementaries. I voted for the 2014 bond, and in that bond, there was $10,800,000 allocated for Lakeview. Right now, it's kind of looking like Lakeview won't be saved. I know Sugar Mill is very organized, it's physically a better facility, but there is demand for both of those schools. I'm a realtor in the area, a lot of young families moving in, so if you close one, in a few years, you're gonna come back, you're gonna need to build, and I am supporting both. And that bond also allocated money for Sugar Mill. I'm asking that you stand by that bond. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here. Next up is Karen Diljanen. I'm sorry, I butchered that.
Karen Diljanen.
Diljanen. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board and Dr. Dupree. Thank you for letting Sugar Mill speak tonight. Home, family, community. These three words describe the sentiments of the generations of community members of the Sugar Mill neighborhood. Based on the presentations last week, you already know the facts. $9 million cost versus $22 million to modernize Lakeview. 97% utilization at Sugar Mill versus Lakeview, 78%. Sugar Mill is 34 years old, and Lakeview is a century. The answer is the most fiscally responsible one: save Sugar Mill Elementary. You already know the parking lot ideas. Add more programs to Lakeview, to service the preschool population. Repurpose Lakeview to a historical site. Add portables to Sugar Mill to consolidate Lakeview students. Now, it's time to hear the words of the Sugar Mill students, parents, and teachers. From a student, Victoria, third grader. "Even if Sugar Mill is small, we still have hope that we can win and not let our school go, because it is a great school. So if I have to go to Lakeview, I will not be happy. So let Sugar Mill stand tall and let it live on and on. It means a lot to me." From a parent, "My daughter, Presley, who has cerebral palsy, has been at Sugar Mill since kindergarten and is now a fifth grader. She has never been treated like less than or different by her peers or teachers. Her peers really look out for her while also treating her like a normal kid. I am thankful every day for Sugar Mill helping make Presley as confident and happy as she is. School could have been a very different experience for her, but with the Sugar Mill family, it has been nothing short of wonderful. She gets mad if she is ill and has to miss one day." From a teacher who battled breast cancer, "I love that it is a community school. We are essentially a small town within a town. Last year, I was going through hell, and my students and parents rallied with my family and I. That is Sugar Mill. Sugar Mill is also a community that helps earn money to pay for Presley's very expensive therapy so she can attend Project Walk. Sugar Mill is the kindness I see in my fifth grader's words and actions as they work to include their peers. Sugar Mill is the amazing turnout we had last Wednesday and the respect we showed Mr. Leopold as he presented his findings." Mr. Leopold as he presented his findings. I am so proud to be a sparkler. Sugar Mill Elementary isn't just a school.
30 seconds.
It's a community, the heart, the soul of the neighbors of Sugar Mill and its neighbors. Please, 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 make the most fiscally responsible choice, and do not close our beloved school. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Smita Singh.
First of all, I'd like to take a moment to thank the board for giving us the opportunity to present our proposed solution for overcapacity at Commonwealth. This truly is an integrated, community-involved process, and we do appreciate all of your efforts at Fort Bend ISD. I do not envy the mammoth task you have in front of you, the board and the steering committee, but we would, what we would like to do today is to make it a tad bit easier for you by bringing to you all the data and analysis that supports our positioning of no Riverstone rezoning and building in addition to Commonwealth. I am confident that you will take into account the emotional aspect of rezoning for these young kids, and so I will not go there today. One of the suggestions presented by Scott was in addition to Commonwealth, which we strongly support. After carefully analyzing the PASA data, new home construction, other elementary school data, we present to you facts that not only support this recommendation, but also has the least impact to our community and children. The present permanent capacity at Commonwealth is 743, and the enrollment is at 937. Our proposed solution to add 12 classrooms brings the permanent capacity to over 1,000 students. I want to reiterate that point. Most elementary schools in growing communities, for example Cornerstone, Anne Sullivan's, Camden Oaks, Sienna Crossing, all have a permanent capacity of 1,000-plus, with the exception of Commonwealth, which is still at 743. Built over 20 years ago, the school has not grown with the growing community. Our proposal is comparable to what you successfully achieved at Cornerstone Elementary. With almost the same acreage and demographics, the recent addition of 10-plus classrooms has provided a wholesome solution for the teachers, parents, as well as our little kids. And we would like for you to do the same at Commonwealth. Per the PASA data, all the new homes at Avalon at Riverstone will be built and occupied by 2022, which should be a stable community, we should be a stable community, and should start showing a negative growth, just like that at Cornerstone. This proposal of converting portables into a permanent structure at CWE also addresses safety concerns of parents, students, and teachers currently using these temporary structures. The current enrollment of 937 demonstrates that the administration at CWE is very capable and have systems in place.
30 seconds.
And can efficiently manage the use of common areas like playground, gyms, and cafeterias. In a nutshell, we, the parents of Avalon at Riverstone, support permanent additions of new classrooms to Commonwealth, duplicating the successful strategy of the board that you guys have implemented at Cornerstone. And I have some light nighttime reading for you guys. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next up, Cecilia Edwards. Cecilia Edwards. You'll have three minutes, and Ms. Helliger will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Good evening. I'm here today to talk about an employee that you're going to speak of for disciplinary action. Her name is Margaret Fields. Today, the superintendent would recommend her suspension, I mean termination for her contract. I'm sorry, I kind of lost my place. Okay, do you see the documentation that we submitted? Do you have the documentation? So you could follow me. Did you turn, give them the documentation? I need you to see the documentation. I need them to see the documentation as we speak.
They will get it to us whenever we break, ma'am.
Okay, the superintendent, it is your responsibility to protect students from being molested and physically abused. The school board should take immediate action to review what went wrong with protocol and communication involving failure to report allegations. The board should provide more detailed information about reporting requirements to all schools in this district. The superintendent allowed previous principal at Hunter's Gill Elementary, Cletus Wiley, to become a principal in another district, knowing that it was a possibility that he put more kids in danger. Shame on you. Ms. Fields, she's a teacher, and she was recommended for termination, but she reported that Mr. Wiley, this principal at Hunter's Gill Elementary, had kids in a closet. And this is a message to all parents. Ask your child.
Madam Board President, if I understand the speaker is essentially using the public comment portion of your meeting to advance a grievance.
No, no, I'm not, because you're going to go behind closed doors today, and he's going to recommend that person be terminated.
And so, and so ma'am.
No, he refused the grievance. He refused the grievance. They said they were not going to do due process.
Ma'am, we have a, we do have a process that has to be followed, and the public comment portion of our board meeting is, cannot be used to argue or to put forth positions on a grievance.
One, it's not arguments, not a grievance, because he refused the grievance. So it's not a grievance because the attorney, the legal department refused the grievance.
There is a process that you have to go through.
I know, listen again.
And that process.
He refused the grievance. The, the legal team called me and said, "We're not going to do the grievance," because it's against your superintendent. So what do you do?
Madam Board President, even if the.
You're here to protect children.
Even if the grievance is rejected, then there is a process for appeal of the grievance that's excluded from the public comment of the board.
Okay, it's not a process, if you're not allowing to go through it. But let's just, okay? Let's take that off. At the end of the day.
So ma'am, I'm.
I'm going to proceed on. Okay. I'm not going to talk about the grievance.
No, ma'am. We're at, we're at the end of your time.
Well, you, he cut into my time. This, we're talking about molesting children, and every parent have a right to know that. Every parent have the right to know that, 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 ask your child if they're, are they being molested? Ask your child, are they being put in a, in a room by themselves with a teacher or a principal? To protect them. So this is every right. Every right, they should know that. They should hear, they should hear that he did not file a protocol. He never reported to the police. He never reported to CPS.
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you one last time, not to use this forum to proceed with a grievance process.
It's not a grievance. I don't have a grievance in process, because they refused the grievance. I don't understand. If they refused the grievance and refused, refused for us to go through.
So I'm going to cut your time. I'm going to cut your time, and we will, I will speak with you after.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So next up is Keith Thomas, and is this about the same? Yeah. I think this is the same subject matter. Mr. Thomas? So, as long as we do not delve into the grievance process and, and reveal any confidentiality's, then I'm, I'm going to allow you to proceed, sir. You'll have three minutes, and Ms. Helliger will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining.
My name is Keith Thomas. I'm with People's Choice Association, and greetings to the board members, and of course, Superintendent Charles Dupree, who allowed, who's currently harassing and trying to fire an employee, Margaret Fields, who's on FM LA and using the.
Mr. Thomas.
To.
Mr. Thomas.
To notice.
I'm going to have to stop you now.
Of a young child's possible molestation.
I'm going to have to stop you now. We're going to, we're not going to allow this to proceed.
This is public information, and we thank that you.
Sir, I'm sorry.
We, uh.
We'll speak with you, we'll speak with you after.
And this is freedom of speech.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And Shamika Wolford, I think is on the same topic. So I'm going to, I'm going to wait and speak with these three after. Next up is Kenny Sumner. Thank you, sir. You'll have three minutes, and Ms. Helliger will let you know when you have 30 seconds remaining.
Good evening. My name is Kenny Sumner, and I appreciate the opportunity to be addressing the board this evening. I attended the April 10th Community Meeting at Elkins High School because an idea was put forward on a parking lot slide that makes absolutely no sense. I understand from the presentations that the parking lot ideas were just that, ideas. They weren't recommendations. You know, they're not options that the board can consider, but this one particular idea had a significant negative impact on my community, and my children, and my friends' children, and their parents, and I'd like to address that tonight. I believe that the negative impact was unnecessary. The controversial idea was to keep Riverstone Zoned to Fort Settlement by moving Colony Meadows to First Colony. Now, it doesn't sound like much unless you live in Colony Meadows, and you're a part of that very close-knit community. The idea, to me, is ridiculous. There are multiple reasons why, but the number one is proximity. The vast majority of kids who attend Colony Meadows and then move on to Fort Settlement live close enough to walk or bike to school. There's evidence of that. Every morning, you can look on Elkins Drive and see the kids biking to school, walking to school, in the designated bike lanes. This is also in line with past Fort Bend ISD rezoning guidelines principles of keeping distances traveled by children as short as possible and minimize the need for student transportation. To alleviate the concern that this idea has raised, I'm asking the board to remove it from the parking lot ideas. The board has enough to deal with, as evident from all the support for other causes in here. This is not something that the board should be considering with its important task to decide the fate of other schools and other districts that have way more impact than one single idea that makes no sense. I believe it would be a waste of this board's time, energy, and resources to do otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next up, Tammy Moreno.
I know the drill. Okay, everyone, about eight years ago, before most of you were on the board, except for Jim, Fort Bend ISD was seriously considering closing doors to Marshall or Willow Ridge. My kids weren't impacted by any of the zoning decisions on the table that year, but I got up in front of our board on multiple occasions and advocated for a district-wide shift that would infuse students in an organic way into our underutilized campuses. I did this because neighborhood schools and pride in these schools are important. School pride can sometimes create rivalries, but it also creates winning football teams, bands that can compete on national level, thriving arts programs, and most importantly, lasting friendships. No district-wide shift happened then, but no doors got shut. Then in 2014, I attended a futures conference. We learned about exciting innovations, including online learning, strategic business partnerships, internships, and technology that allows schools to bring in renowned experts via internet video streams. Then the planning started, and we never spoke about those innovations again. We spoke only of rezoning and new buildings. In the end, the district approved lots of zoning changes in the year 1415, but Marshall and Willow Ridge were again left alone with a promise that the district would do more to better the performance and reputation and public perception of those schools. But you see, it's never been the performance of those schools. A school is only as good as its student body, its teachers, and its critical parental involvement. So here we are again, just three years after new boundaries and feeders were implemented. Another futures conference filled with fun buzzwords and ideas and a promise that this time was different, but we're still talking only about zoning and new buildings. Marshall and Willow Ridge still sit underutilized and under-publicized. Three years ago, lots of communities were impacted by rezoning. The district told us the plans they made were the best long-term solution. A few years later, the same demographer, the same consultant, the same projections, and somehow, many options, some presented by the consultant and others proposed by community feedback, seemed to want to undo some of the theoretical good that was done last time. I would ask this board to please stay the course on the long-term solution strategies developed in 2015 to shift growing populations from the northwest and south, more central to ease the areas of largest growth. Please don't close our schools when there is desperate need for capacity across all grade levels while we are still growing. Build what we need. If the bond proposed makes sense, our community has shown, we will support it. Plan for what is right, not for what the loudest group in the best t-shirt with their own manufactured data might say. And finally, above all, do not touch those kids who were impacted just three short years ago. Ping-ponging is never the right long-term solution. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Nadine Skinner?
My name is Nadine Skinner, and I'm the mother of three children, ages eight to 13, who attend schools in Fort Bend ISD. For the past seven years, I've served as an executive board member for PACE, the Fort Bend Parent Association for Academic Excellence, and I'm currently a member of the Fort Bend ISD GT Parent Advisory Board. As we look at the options presented in the Elkins feeder pattern in the facilities master plan, I would like to present all of you with a bold new option, the creation of a standalone GT Academy at Quail Valley Middle School. For years, I have spoken to parents all throughout Fort Bend ISD about the lack of GT programming for middle school students who are not enrolled in the GT Academy. In fact, each year, there is a very long waiting list of students wanting academy admission, only to be denied by a lack of seats and a poorly implemented lottery admission process. Creating a standalone GT Academy at Quail Valley will give all GT students throughout Fort Bend ISD the opportunity to enroll and receive the GT programs they have been so desperately asking for. With the creation of this bold, new, standalone academy at Quail Valley, we would expect utilization at middle schools throughout the district, such as at Fort Settlement, First Colony, and Baines, to decrease due to transfers to the academy. Opening up the academy to all GT students through an open enrollment policy and via transfers to the academy in grade seven and eight will serve as a vast improvement over the lottery-based admissions academy that we have currently. I would also like to speak to the current situation of the school within a school that we currently have at Quail Valley Middle. To be frank, a division has been created at Quail Valley that is not good for any of the students, the academy students or the zoned ones. The division is seen in the lunchroom, at after-school activities, and in the general upkeep of the campus, and the zoned students are at the disadvantage. It is our feeling that students zoned to Quail Valley Middle would in fact have a better educational experience at a different middle school with capacity in the area. These students would then get to attend one school that acts as a whole, where all students are united for one cause. In advocating for the educational experiences of all children, I want you to be aware that we are concerned for all the students at Quail Valley. This solution will provide all of them the best educational experience possible, and in creating a standalone GT Academy, it will be beneficial to the district as a whole. A packet containing specific details and a petition with 3,400 electronic signatures and 2,000 physical signatures in support of this idea.
30 seconds.
Has been made available to all of you tonight. The time has come to be bold and make an innovative decision. The creation of a standalone GT Academy at Quail Valley Middle will serve GT students from all corners of Fort Bend ISD. It will aid in reducing utilization at our overcrowded middle schools, and it will give zoned Quail Valley students an improved educational experience. It will help Fort Bend ISD inspire and equip its students to pursue futures beyond what they can imagine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Skinner. Thank you for being here. Sapna Singh?
I kind of want Sophia Barra to speak for me. She was amazing. Dear Dr. Dupree, Board President Tassan, and members of the Board of Trustees, thank you for giving me this opportunity to address you all. I'm a parent and a pediatrician to many children all across Fort Bend ISD. I'm also the proud graduate of Fort Bend ISD school system, and I owe a lot of my success to my education. I'm here today over the concerns I have as both a physician and a parent, for the well-being of our children, and I think I speak to all our children, but specifically those whose lives have actually been upended over the past two years. In my experience in a child's life, amidst turmoil at home, school is their beacon of stability. It is the one place they feel safe, and where normalcy prevails. In a divorce, in a death, in the loss of a job or a home, children rely on school to be their soft place to land. This defines our schools as being the hearts of our children's communities, and I'm here to ask you not to break their hearts. I have children being treated for anxiety and depression in unprecedented numbers this year, and it's due to the displacement and financial losses that were endured during Harvey, with a disproportionate amount of that happening at Anne Sullivan Elementary. I myself relied on my children's amazing teachers to heal my own children after my brother passed from cancer two months ago. The women and men that work in these schools give our children a place to go when the rest of their world is in chaos. I cannot express enough how important stability and normalcy is for our kids, and the data points and projections unfortunately never show a child's reality, their pains, their struggles. Rezoning them over and over again, or even presenting the possibility that this could happen shakes their stability to the core. Can we find other options? Yes, we can. Can we be fiscally conservative? Of course. But I would also hope we're able to balance that and invest directly where it counts, in our kids, in our teachers, and initiatives that keep our children's school lives stable. Additions to existing schools can be made. Temporary structures can be moved to schools in need. Highways should be respected as hard. Highways should be respected as hard boundaries to keep our children biking and walking within their own neighborhoods. And expanding existing schools to become academies will leave behind the legacy of flagship schools that Fort Bend ISD deserves. We deserve that. HISD has that. We can have that. We should have that. If a tree's roots are not allowed to grow deep over time, it will always be at risk for falling. Our children need their roots. We cannot set them up to fall. The children of Riverstone who did endure rezoning in 2016 and Harvey in 2017 should not be allowed to go through more displacement, and I plead with you to consider other options. In conclusion, I want you to know that the job of caring for children is often thankless, not even financially lucrative, but it's a profound investment in the future. The community of Riverstone, myself specifically, am very happy to offer you help through this process, and if there's anything I can do, please, please reach out. I appreciate everything you do on behalf of our children.
Thank you for being here. Melanie Chong?
Good evening. My most respected Dr. Dupree and distinguished board members. My name is Melanie Chong. I'm a parent of two kids in Colony Meadows Elementary. I cannot believe that I'm here today to address a totally ridiculous idea that was put out on the parking lot. I would like to voice my disappointment and utter disbelief that the idea of moving Colony Meadows from Fort Settlement Middle School is even on the parking lot. This is utter nonsense. First of all, Colony Meadows kids have been going to Fort Settlement since the inception of Fort Settlement Middle School. Additionally, a large portion of CME students reside less than one mile from Fort Settlement. Our kids walk or bike to Fort Settlement. It does not make money or time sense to bus our kids to a different middle school, as this will only add additional expenses on Fort Bend ISD and waste precious students' time, as that time could be better spent in meaningful endeavors instead of transportation. Furthermore, we stay in this neighborhood because of its stability, and our kids should not be put through this unnecessary stress. The Colony Meadows kids were talking about this issue just days before STAR test, when the only issue that should stress them should be the STAR test itself. Just because there is an increase in new population caused by new developments, we, the mature neighborhoods, should not be subject to suffer through the uncalled-for duress. We are originally zoned to Fort Settlement and should stay that way. Keep this Colony Meadows Elementary-Fort Settlement Clements feeder pattern. It is the tradition. It is the right thing to do. Hence, I would like to request for the board to remove the idea of CME being fed into First Colony Middle School. Colony Meadows Elementary should continue to feed into Fort Settlement, period. Board, it is time for you to make the hard decisions. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for being here. Reggie Thomas?
Board of Trustees and Dr. Dupree, thank you so much for allowing me the time to speak on behalf of my community and children's school this evening. My name is Dr. Reggie Thomas, and I am on the PTO Board at Colony Meadows Elementary School. I am here to express my deep concern for one of the parking lot ideas that made its way onto the community presentations in the last few weeks. That is the idea of moving the Colony Meadows students from the Fort Settlement feeder pattern to First Colony Middle School. First, I want to state First Colony is a fantastic middle school. Parents are not upset about the idea of sending their schools to that part, sending their kids to that particular school, but parents are very upset about how this absurd idea became an option presented to the community. There are three very large problems with the idea of moving Colony Meadows kids out of Fort Settlement. The first problem is the logic that seems to have been thrown out the window with this suggestion. The majority of Colony Meadows students can and do bike and walk to Fort Settlement. It is quite simply a closer school. Why is an option being considered that would take away children from a school where they can walk, only to have them bussed to a school further away? The second problem is the concern regarding representation and influence throughout this process. There isn't a person within the facilities' steering committee representing the Colony Meadows feeder pattern, where there seems to be at least two to three representatives from the community that suggested this outrageous parking lot idea. Does this mean that large community will get to influence the end results even more? It certainly seems plausible. The third and final problem is the lack of guidance by the district and board. During previous rezoning efforts, there were stated guidelines and goals given to the Fort Bend communities, such as cleaning up the feeder patterns, maintaining the neighborhood concept, and minimizing the need for student transportation. What are the guidelines and goals for 2018? It feels like a bit of a free-for-all, and any suggestion is within the realm of possibility. This lack of guidance has put a tremendous amount of stress on our community and all communities within Fort Bend ISD. Based on these problems that I have mentioned, the communities that are zoned to Colony Meadows Elementary School and Fort Settlement Middle School respectfully request that the Fort Bend ISD Steering Committee remove the parking lot idea of moving Colony Meadows students from Fort Settlement to First Colony as their list of options. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. That concludes our audience items portion, and we will move into information items for our facilities' planning update, but before we do that, I want to make a few comments because we're moving into the portion that many of you just spoke about. First of all, I want to thank every single person who's here. We don't get this much attention on a regular basis, and this is not, we don't really like having to go through this process and these types of decisions. I think I probably speak for all board members when I say that this is the hardest part of the job. But I want to thank you who are here, those who are in the community who couldn't be here this evening, who attended the community meetings. Thank you for your emails, even if you haven't gotten responses, we have read them. Thank you for your feedback, for taking the survey. All of that is critically important to this process. I also want to take a minute, I know we have some steering committee members here. Will you guys mind standing up? So let's give them a hand, please. These are just a few members, and on behalf of the Board of Trustees, I want to thank these community members who have stepped up to serve on the steering committee. It is not an easy job. They are getting a real good, real good experience of what it's like to sit in these chairs and to have to pour over that data and come up with options that are presented to you guys, and that is not an easy task. The purpose of that was because, you know, we didn't have to do that. The trustees could have kept this, we could have made the decisions ourselves. I mean, we could have do, we could have done that. That's our, that's our prerogative, but that's not who this Board of Trustees is. We want the community involved and engaged, and even you guys who don't like the parking lot ideas, the purpose of that was to allow each community member to feel like they had a voice. It doesn't mean that every idea is a great idea. It doesn't mean that every idea is going to be passed on as a recommendation, but we wanted to make sure that every person felt like they had a voice and that we weren't just presenting options that were really going to be decisions, because we haven't made decisions, and the steering committee is not finished with their work, and they're going to have to take back the feedback that you guys put out there and look at some of these parking lot ideas as, as potential alternates, maybe things they didn't think of, and maybe they won't work, but they at least get an opportunity to consider them before they are brought as recommendations to the board. The purpose of tonight, I just want to be clear, the purpose of tonight is so that the board can stay engaged in the process, because ultimately, we have a red and green button flashing up here in front of us, and we have to push that button, and that's a very difficult thing to do in situations like this. So we want to make sure that we are given all the information that's been presented and all the feedback, and then the board members will get an opportunity tonight to, to discuss it, to maybe weigh in a little bit. It doesn't mean we've made decisions. You may hear some comments up here that are just opinions. We're still thinking through this process, but the steering committee is going to have to do their work, and we just want to make sure that they hear from the board as they continue through their next couple of meetings to process all of this information, because the last thing we want is for them to do all this work and come up with these recommendations and for the board to go, "Well, we can't do that because of A, B, and C," or something that maybe has not been thought of. We just want to make sure that we are weighing in and giving our view of things. It doesn't mean that that's the way it's going to go, so I just wanted to make those few comments. It was never our intent to pit one community against the other, or to have red shirts and yellow shirts and turquoise shirts, and, because what we really wanted you to see is that we are facing a daunting task, and it's not all about rezoning and facilities. It is about programming, and we, we want to have that conversation as well. So it is our intent for you guys to just know what we're facing so that you can weigh in and help us as we make this decision. With that being said, I'm going to go ahead and pass it along for our facilities' master planning update.
Yes, ma'am. As you can see, we have Scott Leopold on the big screen, as he could not get to town this evening. However, Beth Martinez is going to do the introduction to this session, and then we'll get started. Beth?
Thank you. Good evening, board members, Dr. Dupree, and thank you, Ms. Tossan, for that introduction and for giving accolades to the steering committee. I'd like to confirm and affirm what Ms. Tossan stated. The steering committee, group of 30, took on this task, and they have put in a lot of time, multiple steering committee member, committee meetings, as well as engaging with the public in multiple forums and facilitating table discussions and facilitating and answering questions about the process, most recently in those four community meetings that we held to get feedback on the options that many of you referenced this evening. And so they have really taken on a huge responsibility and a huge role in advising the district in this capacity, and it's to be commended, because they've not taken it lightly, and they've not taken a microscopic approach, but more of a district-wide approach in receiving all of the feedback and hanging in there in the process. So thank you again, steering committee members, for being here this evening and for the work between the work and the work between the meetings, and for your passion and commitment to this district. You're much appreciated. And I would like to say the same to the group that's here from the community. It's been overwhelming over the last couple of weeks to be a part of a community with so much passion and engagement and care and concern for their communities and for their students, and so that does not go unnoticed. We had over 4,100 folks from the district, various communities, come out to the four meetings that we had recently, and even more participate online and provide feedback, and so I can't think of a better place to live and work than in a community with that much care and concern for the future of our district. So thank you all for being here. And Scott, for being here through Skype that is up on the screen and working, so he's going to talk you through the most recent work over the last two weeks and the feedback that we've received, including parking lot information, and then our next steps in the process. So Scott, I'm turning it over to you.
Hey, thank you. I'm glad that I could be able to participate remotely. It was great to hear all the public comment as well. The whole purpose of this is, again, is to just give you guys an update about everything we've done so far. Everything in the report, the presentation I'm going to have tonight is as of April 12th, which is last week's Thursday. The survey closed about two hours ago at 5:00 p.m., and we had 21,593 responses on the survey, and so that's, that's quite a bit of turnout. One thing that I did want to point out is that there were clear, organized efforts to attempt to flood the survey with duplicate responses. We had over, it was 27,000 responses last Thursday, but we've had over 4,000 responses from a total of three different IP addresses. And so as we go through this report, I've been able to kind of filter this out based on duration of time spent on the survey, and so I've kind of broken everything out into two categories. All of the survey responses that spent more than 60 seconds on the Thurs, on the survey, and then all the responses of every, every single response, so you can kind of see things both ways to get an idea of how everything is affected. Moving on to the next page, I'm just going to start going through the feedback. The way that I've structured this is we're going to go through, we're going to go through each of the feeder patterns. I'm going to start with high school options, because as we, as we started to go through these results, it started to become very evident that people were placing their responses anywhere on the survey, and a lot of the responses were around high school, and so I wanted to just get them out and on the high school section first. I've kind of changed that order. In the presentation, the survey of high schools are last, but I'm just going to go through them first. And I'm not going to go through every line, I'm just going to kind of hit the big picture stuff. This is the, the high school option one, which is basically consider rezoning to balance enrollment between Ridge Point, High Power, Willow Ridge, and Marshall. And then these, these little doughnut or pie charts here show us the, the level of support for each option, and so it kind of comes, becomes very evident off the bat. So this is all of the responses that took more than a minute to complete, and there are 311 responses. And then we had another thou, we had another thousand responses that took less than a minute on the survey, and you can really see the impact that has on the overall response. And so we had a, we had about, Scott, let me zoom here. We had about 150 people that were in support of this option that spent more than a minute on the survey, and then we had over 1,100 responses that were in support of it when we included all the results from the survey. And so we had, we had a few people that were, that were employing some kind of automated scripts to kind of flood the survey in support of this option. The comments that we're looking at here, and again, this is not, if we went through here, we have probably close to 2,000 pages of comments completely, and so what we did is we just selected comments to kind of illustrate the range of what we have here in this particular area, and I'm not going to go through all of these, but I'll just kind of take some highlights. There's, there are people that don't want their taxes to increase. There's people that obviously want to keep Sienna students together and in Sienna, and there's people that want to respect Highway 6 as the national boundary. And so, again, you can go through this and kind of see what those ranges of comments are, and then below here, we have our additional ideas or our parking lot ideas. And these are from both the, the paper parking lots that we had at each meeting, and then the additional idea parking lot items on the actual survey. Some of the ideas that we had here were consider including Elkins in the rezoning. The way we outlined this, it was just kind of a domino of Ridge Point through High Power to Willow Ridge to Marshall, and so the idea of including Elkins and maybe saying that the area north of 6 should feed into Marshall, and then rezone High Power between, between Elkins and Marshall. Other idea is to build another high school in the area in Sienna. Another idea is to consider rezoning all non-Sienna residents out of Ridge Point and into High Power, and this is an, this is a concept that we're starting to see evident throughout the district and other feeder patterns, the idea of keeping master-planned communities together. Another idea, overflow students from overutilized schools should go to Marshall, High Power, and Willow Ridge. And another idea you get was to consider a split shift at Ridge Point, maybe, maybe one shift of classes going to school from 6:00 in the morning till 12:00 in the afternoon, and then 1:30 to 7:30 instead of redistricting. So I'm going to move on to the next one, and so the next option here is the option two, which is converting Marshall High School into an early college or, you know, dedicated academy high school, and then rezoning to balance enrollment. And then one little caveat here is this action is likely not, not enough to completely relieve Ridge Point. Looking at the support for this option, we didn't have all that much support over here, but then when we include all responses, and so this is, this on the left is, is just those participants that spent more than a minute, which is 301, and then we have another thousand responses here that are not in support of this. And all of these responses had the, had the comment in there, "Keep the academy status quo," and so that's kind of what drove that. Some of the other ideas here, or comments that we got, is that this doesn't address the capacity issues in Sienna. I think that pre-college will not attract any students and will not solve the problem. Marshall's in good condition, it should be utilized, it makes sense to have all of the academies in one place rather than scattered throughout the district. And again, these are just kind of general comments in reference to this option as it was presented. Some other additional ideas we have here is consider moving all academies to Marshall while the current students are in place, based on the current enrollment at Marshall and the current enrollment in all the academies, there would be room. Build another high school in the Ridge Point attendance area, and again, more, convert Marshall to a dedicated early college and leaving all the students there. And then another idea here was there shouldn't be any academies at schools that are not underutilized. There should be, not be an academy at Elkins in an area that is experiencing growth. Instead, focus on early college programs that also provide technical and non-college prep programs at Marshall. This will attract more students to Marshall and will also help provide much-needed service to students. Moving on to the next option, option three, this is identical to option two, but instead of Marshall being the, the dedicated- This is identical to option two, but instead of Marshall being the dedicated high school, it would be High Power as the early college or academy high school. Kind of, kind of the same level of support for responses that were over a minute, and then responses that were, you know, all responses that we have here. Again, we have that, that large contingent of responses that spent less than a minute on the survey that are kind of pushing this needle towards less support. And again, that overarching comment of keeping any programs, academy programs status quo. We don't want High Power students rezoned, doesn't help with Sienna overcrowding. This essentially closes High Power to the general community. Communities tend to thrive around high schools, I'd rather not completely dismantle that relationship. Other ideas that we have here, you know, build another high school in Sienna. And then another one that's starting to come out is consider Lake Olympia Middle Schools an early college or academy high school, and then build a new middle school for the High Power feeder pattern. Moving on to the option feeder pattern, our option here was to construct Elementary 51, and this will provide relief for Madden and Neil Elementary Schools, which are in the Travis feeder pattern. We had a lot of comment in here about not splitting up the Eliana Master Planned Community. We had people that wanted an addition on Madden, people want to see Elementary 51 built larger. All students should go to their closest school, and we're starting to see a lot of, I built my home specifically for Madden. And this isn't just unique to Madden, we're seeing this in all areas that, that, you know, they purchased or built their homes specifically for a school, and they should never be rezoned. Other ideas that we have in this area, consider constructing Elementary 51 with an additional, additional classroom space, which would increase capacity to over 1,000 students. Consider building 51 large enough to accommodate all of Eliana with Madden, and rezone not all non-Eliana students out of Madden. And so I do want to talk about, you know, you would think that, you know, we're opening up a new school, we should have, you know, kind of unanimous support for this. Throughout this survey, anytime the word rezoning was mentioned, it just seemed to draw negative support. And so a lot of the feedback that we got around this wasn't necessarily opposing Elementary 51, but opposing any rezoning that would occur due to that. And so that's something that we kind of see prevalent throughout the responses to this survey. Moving on to Bush. We didn't have a lot to do in this area because of the new construction that we've had recently, and so our option here is to perform renovation and life cycle replacements on other facilities based on needs, and then consider possibly rezoning students from overutilized schools and adjacent feeder patterns like Travis or Austin. And so we started to get negative support for that, just due to the rezoning. And so you can see here, we have the same number of responses that spent more than a minute on the survey as we do all responses. So this is an area that we didn't have any stuffing on the ballot box, per se. Some of the feedback that we started to get in this option is, we started to see a lot of this, you know, zone tell fair up Clements, and that was never an option that we considered. It only really started to come up in the parking lot ideas. And so people kind of put those comments throughout the survey almost everywhere. Other comments that we got in this area is, again, building 51 larger, and not wanting to play, you know, not wanting to pay high property taxes, or, you know, this is one particular, we are not paying high property taxes to go to a Title I school such as Holly. Madden was built for Eliana, and if students are rezoned, it should never be the lower performing school. Other ideas we have in this area, again, rezone all non-Eliana, or rezone all non-Eliana students to Holly and then Bush. Verify that all Madden students actually reside within the attendance zone and are not borrowing addresses. And then build an addition on Madden, and even maybe Travis. Okay, moving on to Clements. Of all the feeder patterns, Clements is the area that we got the most response from overall. So it's kind of hard to read on this, but of the respondents that spent more than, more than a minute on the survey, we had almost 2,200 of them. When we consider all the responses, we had nearly 4,000. And so this was an area where we had a lot of, a lot of pumping of the survey from individual IP addresses. Our option one was to consider additions on Commonwealth, Colony Meadows, Austin Parkway, Settlers Way, and then rezone to balance the enrollment between those schools, and perform lifecycle renovation projects based on need. Our overall comments that we had on this, expand Commonwealth to the point where rezoning is not necessary. Absolutely do not support any rezoning, proposing that Avalon at Riverstone, go to Sullivan Elementary to, you know, to reduce overutilization of Commonwealth. Commonwealth has been overcrowded for a long time, and it's impacting the quality of education. I'm going to go back to that one that I just talked about, I misspoke a little bit. I propose that Avalon at Riverstone move to Ann Sullivan Elementary to reduce utilization of Commonwealth. Additional ideas that we have in this area, try to find a site for an additional school in the area, build a new school for communities as promised by developers, consider additions on elementary schools to increase capacity, and then move sixth grade into elementary schools to relieve middle school utilization. And a lot of these are just ideas to eliminate the need for rezoning. Zone Creekstone at Riverstone to Austin Parkway, and zone Avalon at Riverstone to Sullivan. So another rezoning idea. Okay, moving on to option two. What this option was, is this was the option to consider a conversion and reuse of the administration annex, and it can be used as a standalone facility or serve as a special facility that supports one or more of the area elementary schools. For example, it could be a K-1 facility that supports Colony Meadows and Colony Ben as a 2-5. Feedback that we got on this, it's inequitable and unwise to spend tax dollars on facilities temporary solutions. It just isn't a practical solution. Due to rezoning, kids will suffer, and property value of Riverstone will go down, and it could, you know, incur asset loss, devaluation of property. And if this happens, the district will get less money in taxes. I'll only support this option if no rezoning is required as a result. That's another theme that we kind of have throughout. Other ideas that we have for this, for this parking lot here is we have, consider the annex as a standalone GT academy. This will likely reduce enrollment at Fort Settlement and eliminate the need for rezoning. Tear down the annex and construct a new school on the site. Okay, moving on to middle school option one. This option was to construct an addition on First Colony, and then rezone to balance enrollment between First Colony and Fort Settlement. Looking at the overall support here, again, we've got almost 2,200 respondents that spent more than a minute on the survey, and there wasn't all that, there wasn't all that much support for this option. And then when we had all of the responses, there was more support for this option. So, you know, some of the themes that we have here, not rezone students south of Texas 6, the schools north of Texas 6, Lake Quail Valley or Lake Olympia. And I think that's in response to a parking lot idea that we're seeing come through on the comments to the survey. Nowhere on the options did it talk about rezoning anybody to Quail Valley, that was only ever a parking lot idea. Other ideas, this is the best solution, it will resolve problems permanently. And then another, another kind of common thought, or comment that we saw was last in, first out. And then also, it seems like a good idea, as long as it does not include the wholesale rezoning of Colony Meadows. And then we do not support any rezoning between First Colony and Fort Settlement. Other ideas that we had here, again, considering the annex as a standalone GT academy to reduce enrollment in the area. Consider an addition on Fort Settlement to accommodate Riverstone. And then we had our considering, consider a standalone GT academy at Quail Valley to help move students from overutilized middle schools. Non-GT students at Quail Valley should feed into underutilized middle schools like Dulles or Lake Olympia. Another, another idea is Riverstone is too big to fit into any single middle school, and it's already, it's already used by other communities. Fort Bend ISD needs to build a new middle school from Riverstone residents, and there's no doubt about the urgency for this. Okay, moving on to Dulles. This first option for Dulles was to demolish and rebuild Meadows Elementary on its existing site, right size to the population. Overall, we had, you know, the same number of people took the survey, spent more than a minute, it's all respondents, so everybody spent a good amount of time on the survey, 219 responses on the Thursday of last week. And there was overall support for this area. Most of the comments that we had in this area were related to the implementation of it. They liked the idea of demolishing, or swinging on site, perhaps, so consider building a new school on the existing site on some of the green space, allowing the school to maintain its, you know, current location and identity while new construction is going on. That was kind of a overall comment there. Other options that we had in this area, consider rebuilding Meadows large enough to serve the Berrienton Place students within the Dulles feeder pattern, and then utilize Berrienton Place as a swing space for Meadows and other projects. Other ideas, consider creating Meadows as a magnet, or converting it to a magnet-type school of natural sciences. It already has many programs in place, and there are many opportunities in Meadows Place. And then also consider making the replacement school a modernized, open plan facility. And so, you know, a lot of people like the, like the facility as it is now, but would just like to see the same kind of program, but in a new, modern facility. Option two in this area was to vacate Meadows Elementary and accommodate the students in adjacent elementary schools, and either demolish the facility, or use it for green space for some kind of noneducational use. Overall, there was not a lot of support for this, for this option. You know, absolutely disagree with this proposal. Meadows Place is a city that cares passionately about its elementary school. And then other questions, how has Meadows been allowed to get to the current state of disrepair? And then, as far as additional ideas go, it really just referred to what we talked about on the previous slide. Moving on to Elkins. So elementary option one, consider rezoning between Lantern Lane and Quail Valley to balance enrollment. We had to do a lot of, a lot of filtering in this one, because the location of Settlers Way and Austin Parkway are actually in the Clements feeder pattern, and there's a lot of talk about Sullivan and Riverstone in that area, which are in the Elkins feeder pattern. And so we kind of had to go through this and, and make sure that we got the, the comments that were relevant to, you know, the schools that we're talking about within the feeder pattern. We don't want any rezoning for elementary schools of Riverstone, students keep them in the current feeder pattern. Would really appreciate status quo, Riverstone students have already been moved around. And so I think what that's referring to is considering the projected utilization of Austin Parkway and Settlers Way, knowing that they might have additions on them at some point, which could, in the future, possibly help relieving Sullivan Elementary. So overall, we did not have a lot of support for this option, and I believe that it is because of that rezoning aspect of this. We didn't get a whole lot of feedback relative to the Lantern Lane and Quail Valley enrollment. It was all related to mostly Sullivan and Austin Parkway and Settlers Way. And also, you know, other ideas, partner with charter schools to reduce overutilization. Another idea that kind of came out, one of the, you know, reasons for putting an addition or new schools in this area was because of the projected growth in the Lake Olympia corridor or Fort Bend Toll Road corridor. One of the ideas that we got that was kind of out of the box was, hey, what if we convert Lake Olympia Middle School to an elementary school facility to address that, that potential growth? And then build a new middle school in the High Tower feeder pattern. And so that was kind of another idea that came out of this area. Moving on to option two. This was building an addition onto Palmer to, to address that growth. And then also consider balancing enrollment between Lantern Lane and Quail Valley. And again, we started to get a lot of feedback that were kind of relative to, to Riverstone in that area. I do not support any rezoning of Sullivan Elementary School. Copy and paste content below for question six. And so it starts to get a little evident that there was some organized Facebook or social media effort to put that information on the survey. I support filling up the utilized schools to balance enrollment, reducing operational costs, and saving taxpayer dollars. And again, not a whole lot of support for this option, but it's, it's mostly driven by anything that touches Riverstone or Ann Sullivan Elementary. Other ideas in this area, again, partnering with charter schools, kind of the same as we had before, consider that, that Lake Olympia Middle School site as a new elementary facility or a converted elementary facility to address that growth, and then building a, a new middle school in the High Tower feeder pattern. Okay, moving on to the middle school option in this area. This option would simply expand the GT program at Quail Valley to draw a district, you know, just enrollment away from other underutilized middle schools, or overutilized middle schools. And again, we did not have a lot of support for this option. You know, looking at these, at these diagrams here, we had over, you know, close to 2,000 responses for both. So not a whole lot of, of, you know, artificial inflation of these numbers. As far as feedback goes, a lot of this was just related to the parking lot idea of moving anybody south of 6 into Quail Valley Middle School. We did get some feedback that we do not like, you know, smart kids and regular kids divided. They should, they should socialize with each other instead of being isolated from one another. And then, of course, we got, you know, why, why don't you just rezone Riverstone students to Quail Valley? These are good students. Don't, they don't need GT program, they can boost the Quail Valley score, and we don't need money to expand facilities. Other ideas in this area, again, this is kind of echoed from before. Consider moving the GT academy at Quail Valley to another middle school. Rezone to balance enrollment between Fort Settlement, First, First Colony, and Quail Valley, and, you know, see the Clements feeder pattern. Another idea here, make Quail Valley a standalone GT academy to relieve overutilization at the other middle schools, as opposed to the current schools in a school concept. Close Lake Olympia Middle School, transfer all students to Quail Valley. Move the eastern portion of Riverstone to Lake Olympia. And again, we have our, use the annex as a GT academy, freeing up space at Quail Valley for rezoning. And then we also had the idea of creating a GT program at every middle school. Okay, moving on to High Tower. Our option in this area was to construct a new elementary school to relieve parks in the Lake Olympia Parkway, Fort Bend Toll Road corridor. And this is kind of also related to that, that option that we had in the previous slide with Palmer. Overall, kind of mixed support for this, there wasn't a whole lot of response in this area, about 130 responses across the board. Looking at the comments, I teach at Parks, I've seen the growth in the neighborhood as well as the Tollway area, it's only right to have a school in place to avoid overcrowding. Additional ideas, again, consider converting Lake Olympia Middle School into an elementary facility. We do have a lot of repeats kind of through this, but a lot of these kind of cross feeder patterns, and it's important to, to illustrate these ideas, because some people might just pick up the support and only look at one feeder pattern. Rezone students from Parks and Goodman to Burton. Use the excess capacity at High Power to serve 7th and 8th graders. And so that might, that might fix the issue of not having a middle school at High Power. And then, of course, build a middle school feeder in the area is another idea. Okay, moving on to Kempner. Our first option in this area is to close and repurpose Sugar Mill Elementary for district use, perform a full modernization at Lakeview. Consider rezoning process to align the Lakeview students that reside in the Austin feeder pattern with the Austin feeder pattern schools. And then consider serving the Berrienton Place students within the Kempner feeder pattern in either Lakeview or Town West, and then have our lifecycle projects on our other facilities. We had about 500 responses kind of across the board from this one, and there were, you know, overall, there wasn't a lot of support for this option. The comments that we got in this area, modernizing Lakeview is not cost-effective when comparing to the renovation costs at Sugar Mill. Cannot close any elementary schools, we're still building elementary schools in the district, which shows that we have a need for seats. Rezone if needed to populate existing facilities. Other additional parking lot ideas that we have here, consider Lakeview as an early childhood site. Consider renovating both Lakeview and Sugar Mill, keeping both schools open, maybe a TK2 or a 3-5 concept. If Sugar, Sugar Mill or Lakeview consolidate, use the remaining schools as swing space for Meadows while it's rebuilt. Expand the community use of the auditorium renovation, and repurpose Lakeview facility for complementary community use, and let Sugar Mill remain as an elementary school. Moving on to the next option, option two. This is to close and repurpose Lakeview, perform a major renovation at Sugar Mill, and then consider that same rezoning process to align those, those Lakeview students within the Austin feeder pattern in schools. But also consider accommodating the Berrienton Place students in the Kempner feeder pattern in either Sugar Mill or Town, Town West. Overall, we had, we had a, you know, majority support for this option, over 60%, and again, about those same 500 responses in this area. Some of our comments that we had, Lakeview is not in the heart of a neighborhood, and Sugar Mill is. I believe renovating Sugar Mill would be more cost-effective to the district since it's a much newer facility than Lakeview. Other ideas, parking lot ideas that we have here, again, consider Lakeview as an early childhood center. Another idea that we had, and this is only in here because I believe that MR Wood is in the Kempner feeder, feeder pattern, was in the rebuild of Meadows, consider MR Wood as a place to have students during rebuild. And then consider making Lakeview a FDISD Kids Hall of Fame. And so lots of ideas for, for how to, you know, how to address that Lakeview facility that's no longer going to have a, a school presence. Moving on to the next area, this is Marshall feeder pattern. So our first option in this, this is around elementary schools. So close and repurpose Hunter's Glen for district use, perform lifecycle replacements on any other schools. Overall, kind of mixed results on this one, we didn't have a whole lot of feedback, about 300 respondents overall. Some of our comments, I know the facilities are underused, but having taught in this area for 29 years... for 29 years, I feel it's very necessary to lower class size and have smaller classes. I understand that the area feeding the Marshall struggles with enrollment, but I believe that implementing a system that calls for rezoning and redefining a boundary to effectively feed those students into middle schools and high schools should be considered before Hunter's Ele, before Hunter's, before closing Hunter's Glen. For example, consider having Quail run, students go to Hunter's Glen for elementary. Other ideas that we had in this area, close Glover, utilize its space for administrative purposes. Also tackle elementary issues with literacy and advocacy programs that monitor students and track success from elementary all the way to high school. Other ideas, create a special program at Hunter's Glen, like FinR, ELL or maybe Montessori. One thing I did want to talk about is that we did have a lot of feedback at Marshall, specifically about Marshall High School. And we put that feedback in those, those overall high school options areas and so, you're not going to really see that in this because this mostly focuses on the elementary option. Okay, moving on to Ridge Point. Our elementary option one, build two new elementary schools, one on the Texas Six corridor and one on the Sienna Parkway 521 corridor. This was, this was interesting. There was a lot of, you know, we had, we had 573 respondents that spent more than a minute on the survey and overall about 850 respondents. Some of the feedbacks that we got here, how many times do these children need to be rezoned? There's been a lot of rezoning in this area. My child, or my child lost her closest friend in, in first grade. We need elementaries to keep up with the growth in the neighborhood. I would support this if and only if the, the school supported the CUN residents. Our tax dollars should be going to the schools and students who are paying the taxes, not neighborhoods that are being buffed in. Homes not paying taxes, Sienna should be zoned to schools, should not be zoned to schools in Sienna. Additional ideas in this area, this was interesting to me, consider, consider changing grade configurations throughout the feeder pattern to deal with utilization. Maybe look at K4, 5, 6 and 7, 8. Instead of building two elementary schools, build one fifth and sixth grade campus to help with overcrowding. Another idea that, that kind of came out that we'll talk about more in the next option is consider going K4 in the elementary schools, 5, 6 at Bain, 7, 8 at Thornton, build a new ninth grade center. And then 10, 12 at Ridge Point, this option may not need the two new elementary schools. And if we do this, the ninth grade center is less expensive than two new elementary schools. Moving on to the next option, middle school and high school. This is the option one, which is the grade configuration change. This would change Bain's to a 6, 7, Thornton's to an 8, 9 and Ridge Point to a 10, 12. Overall, with the respondents that, that, you know, spent more than a minute on this, you know, majority of the people kind of were unsure, but, you know, we had, you know, about a third of the support and about 25% opposed. When we look at all responses, including those that spent less than a minute on the survey, we have a majority, over 50%, that support this idea. This option rather. Some of the feedback that we got here, absolutely, I'm sorry. Absolutely do not support this option. Two middle schools are built to accommodate the overcrowding at Bain's. The ninth grade center will just need, need to be built to accommodate overcrowding at Ridge Point. I find it than, I find it better than being rezoned to Hightower. Additional ideas in this area, I'm sorry, I'm on the wrong slide.
You are on, thank you.
Additional ideas in this area, again, that idea of a, of the K4 of the elementary schools, fifth and sixth grade at Bain's, seventh and eighth grade at Thornton, a new ninth grade center. The idea that, that this could reduce the utilization of the elementary schools by shifting fifth grade out and that the ninth grade center would be less expensive than two elementary schools. Other ideas, this is a short-term plan. A long-term plan, we made to build another high school in Sienna. And just to look at this, I, I was looking at the wrong chart again. So, support for this option. Overall, we've got a lot of support with the, with the responses that spent more than a minute on it. And then we had, we had less support for those when we consider all the responses. And so, we had a lot of responses that were less than a minute that came in not supporting Okay, moving on to option two for the middle schools and high schools. This is to construct a ninth grade center for 1,000 students to relieve Ridge Point High Schools. Ridge Point High School, I love the idea of the, of the sixth, seventh and eighth, ninth grade building, but I strongly believe that ninth and 12th grades should be separated. Again, how does this impact, you know, what would the program look like for ninth grade, sports, band, choir, et cetera? Again, other ideas, the K4, 5, 6, 7, 8 or 9, 10, 12 idea. We all know that, that 1,000 students isn't going to be enough, so if you're going to build another campus, just make it 2,500 and have it be a 9, 10, but at that point, it's really your second high school. Consider making the new building a 12th grade center instead of a, instead of a ninth grade And then other ideas, consider open enrollment between Ridge Point and Hightower where students can, where parents can choose between both campuses. Maybe some parents in Sienna won't mind sending their students to Hightower. Also offer special programs at Hightowers and send their parents to send their students there. Okay, moving on to Travis. Our option here, build a campus addition on the Neil. The core was originally designed for 1,000 students and so, just put the addition on that facility to get the, the overall capacity up to 1,000 students. Overall, we had just under 200 responses in this area. Did not have a whole lot of support for this area, but this was, this was mostly related to anything that would really touch the boundaries or take anybody out of Madden. So, if, you know, if capacity is needed, build, but don't build over there and shut down schools elsewhere in the district, use the capacity that we have first. Shouldn't, you know, shouldn't move the least expensive houses to another elementary school. Should be by, which part of the neighborhood is closest based on proximity. Again, a lot of this is related to Madden. We did start to get the parking lot ideas around the feeder pattern split that we currently have at Madden. Madden currently feeds 100% into Garcia and then it splits between Travis and Austin. And so, you know, kind of what we got in this area, Madden is going to feed to Travis and it needs to go to Bowie and not Garcia. Other ideas, put a two-story addition on the Madden. And again, consider building 51 large enough to accommodate all of Aliana within Madden. Consider rezoning all non-Aliana resident, non-Aliana residents out of Madden. Okay, moving on to Willow Ridge. So, option one, a major renovations at Ridgemont to create a TK1 building focusing on early literacy and then build a new 1,200 student 2.5 building on the Shadow Creek grant site. There wasn't a whole lot of support for this, for this option. I mean, there, there was some, but more, more opposition and support. You know, comments that we have in the area, the new facility will be too far from the neighborhoods that Ridgemont, Ridgate and Blue Ridge and Briar Gate serve. Too many schools to close, we may need the seats. Other ideas that we had in this area, rebuild Blue Ridge and open it to the community. Create a dedicated school or a school within a school to house special education programs in the underli, underutilized Blue Ridge. Just, just ideas to, to better utilize those facilities. Moving on to option two. So, this was renovations at, at Briar Gate, Ridgate and Ridgemont and then close and repurpose Blue Ridge. More support for this than the previous option, but we only had 42 response, respondents fill this out. Comments that we have, I'm a teacher at Blue Ridge, where would I go if my job insured? These schools are actually in our communities, fix them rather than spending money on a new one in Shadow Creek. Other options that we have here, other ideas rather, moderate renovations at all four campuses. Also, just consider new construction instead of renovations. You're going to, the idea kind of here was if you're going to replace Meadows and Blue and Lakeview, then maybe consider this area as well. Okay, our last slide that we have here, we did have a chance to give kind of an abridged presentation to the student voice group, which is a group of, of 33 high school students that represent, you know, three, three representatives from each high school. And we gave them a chance to kind of go through and, and discuss everything and kind of give their parking lot ideas. And so, I'm just going to kind of quick, quickly go through this. You know, what was surprising to me about their feedback is that they use the word rezoning a lot. And everybody was kind of, has, has been pretty opposed to any rezoning, but when we talked to this with the students, do they, you know, I would say almost the majority of these options talk about, or these ideas talk about rezoning. They talked about the idea of, of rezoning new territory to Austin and this was something that we kind of saw throughout the survey, trying to, trying to help out with that Sotarsia split currently. Sotarsia split three ways, Brazos Bend goes to Travis, Walker Station goes to Austin and Cornerstone goes to Clements. And so, the idea of trying to get all of new territory into Austin was something that they came up with, that they, that they mentioned. Also rezoning a portion of Elkins to Marshall and then rezoning part of Ridge Point to Elkins. Make Marshall early college high school, move Willow Ridge kids to Hightower, zone neighborhood kids around Ridge Point to Marshall. Tear down and repurpose Lakeview, renovate Sugar Mill and adjust Lakeview's feeder pattern. Build a middle school for Hightower in which it's solely zoned there. The neighborhoods close to Elkins that are zoned to Ridge Point should be rezoned. Try to make Willow Ridge and Marshall stick day. And then also make, make a GT high school or early college prep high school. They didn't like the idea of making a ninth grade center or splitting grades. And so, again, this is just, this is just a kind of overall, this is the feedback that we got from those student groups. And so, with that, that, that kind of concludes my presentation. Beth, did you want to add anything else?
I think you've covered the main themes. Thank you, Scott.
All right. Thank you, Scott, and thank you, Beth. We appreciate all your work on all of this, for attending all the community meetings, for making that presentation, not just four times, but five, because twice at Elkins, right? So, that's five times. And, and for taking all those questions. So, what I'm going to do now is I'm going to open it up for either questions or board comment or discussion. We can go feeder pattern by feeder pattern or you guys can just, just comment on the things that, that stand out to you and, and the issues that you want to talk about. We'll start with Mr. Rosenthal.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott. That was clear as mud. Actually, I'm joking, it was a very good presentation. But obviously, it's a very difficult concept here that we're trying to piece together, having done it four years ago, so. But my first question is, can you identify where that IP address is coming from? Because, I mean, I, I can tell from the, where the comments were. Do we know?
We can, we can kind of do a, we can do a search on the IP addresses and do like a geolocation, but the, the three IP addresses that all, that accounted for probably 4,000 responses, two of them were right in and around Fort Settlement and one was actually around Baylor. And so, I don't know if it was someone writing a script and running it at home overnight and then running it again at work the next day or, or what it was, but those are the areas that they were in and it's not surprising since most of those respondents were focused purely on the Clements, Commonwealth and Fort Settlement areas.
Right, right. So, yeah, you can, you can, you can kind of tell where those came from, but it's actually, it's disappointing that somebody would do that. You know, I understand this is a very emotional subject. That's the hard part about being up here. You're dealing with two things. You're dealing with people's kids and their taxes. But to do something like that, you're, you're almost invalidating a lot of serious concerns that people put actual time into answering some of these questions. And so, it just makes extra work trying to figure out which ones of these, of these responses are real and which are just generated by a script. And so, it's, it's, I, I would say shame on people for doing that. And I do appreciate many of the other ones where you look where you see that people actually took the time to, you know, give constructive criticism or, or constructive arguments, options, proposals, and, and we appreciate that. That was very obvious in, in many of these areas, so. I, I have some other questions though, and I, and I'm actually not going to try to talk about specific feeder patterns because just like I said last week, you know, it just, it's just going to set off the rumor mill and then we'll see, you know, even more colored shirts, so. What, how much land is actually available in Riverstone or in Sienna? Because, you know, many of the comments talk about, well, just build a school, just build a school. Because I'm pretty sure there's kind of like none. Is that correct? For those of us who've looked at that?
I, I don't have, I don't have the, the map in front of me, but PASA did have a, there, there is a page in the PASA study that shows all available land for sale over, over five acres. And there was not anything in Riverstone in that area. There, there was, there is some land available within the Ridge Point feeder pattern.
Okay. And then, the other thing that, that we have to consider, so I'd like to ask others to consider, how much did we spend on Thornton Middle School? Oscar or Steve, do you have that? Approximate, not, you know, we don't need a exact number.
It's in the 30 million range.
Okay. And I remember the last time we built the high school at Ridge Point, it was in the, about 90 million, something like that? No, it was, it was up there.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Yeah, okay. All right, so, you know, these are things that we all have to consider, obviously, because, you know, that's going to, that's going to really ratchet up the cost of, of a future bond. So, you know, when, when, you know, we get suggestions, we'll just build, build, build. It's not that easy. And one, it takes more than, you know, a few months to get that done anyway, so. Let's see, the other question I had, if you go to page nine. You see the disparity in the support versus not support between the, what I will call valid responses versus the invalid responses, which are almost, well, let's see, about 1,500, 1,600 votes there. What do you think caused that? What do you think the main objection was there? Or I should say, I should say what caused the, the sudden support when, you know, you had IP addresses coming from the Fort Settlement area?
I think that, that when I look at this, and, you know, this is, this is opposition against anything, anything Quail Valley over here. And then I think the support for this is just, you know, perhaps a group that just wants to keep that, that, that area around Fort Settlement the same. And so, the idea was that, in this option, we would only be balancing enrollment between First Colony and Fort Settlement.
So, so maybe the fear was that if we add an addition to First Colony, which I don't think is needed anyway based on the, the decreasing enrollment, that there'd be people moving out of, forced to move out of Fort Settlement? Probably?
I think that's the idea.
Okay, yeah. All right. And then some of the other questions about Madden, and this would be for Oscar, are, is it even possible to add on to that school?
Yes, sir, it is possible. The location where the portables are presently located, you could put a two-story addition there. The portables would have to go into the playground while that's happening and then it would take some of the play area because obviously the two-story addition would be a little wider than, than the portables that we have there.
Okay.
But it is possible.
Okay. And, and I guess the, the same, you'd have to ask the same question about Commonwealth. Is that, is that actually possible to do that? I mean, being a much older school, could you do that? Is there area? Is there room?
Well, sir, it is possible. You don't always have to look at just adding on. You, you could do some demolition and then some addition to gain additional space. So, I mean, the answer would be yes. Would it be easy? No.
Okay. Okay. I have some more, but I'll yield for now.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Ms. Heliger.
Thank you. Thank you, Scott, for your presentation. You know, I've been reading through all of the documents and I've got, this is nighttime reading every night and I've got... reading every night, and I've got so many questions, and learning some of the communities and whatnot. But I, I want to say a couple of general statements around some of the concerns that I've had, with some of the comments, and, and direction toward, to the Facilities Committee, is that when considering our options, we should not be put in half versus the have-not against each other. Number one. I found some of the comments, and the undertones of some of these statements were, were, I'll just be honest, a bit racist, and a bit elitist. Our job is to serve all of our students in Fort Ben ISD, not just certain neighborhoods. And it's important for us to consider that when making these types of decisions. Unfortunately, I wasn't part of the first, well, 2014, 2015, but I remember being there and being in the meetings. There is a lot of things for us to consider with this particular process. Now, when I look at high schools, I'll, I'll start with high schools. When I look at high schools, I would like to see us utilize the high schools. I think someone said that, let me take my notes here. Someone made the statement that high schools are the center of our community, and makes them thrive, and I believe that. And so I was sitting here thinking, and, I mean, pondering it all over, you know, for the last couple of weeks or so, just, you know, trying to see both sides, and different sides of this coin, because this is different, you know, this coin has more than just a head and a tail. It's got the size as well. Do we not want programs that support our kids, no matter what school they're in? Or does, or does it have to be just in my neighborhood? I'm, I want to challenge us, and challenge the community in their thought process, because if I had an opportunity to send my kid at, maybe, let's see, an international program of some sorts, wouldn't I want my child to go to that school? Or it doesn't have to be in my neighborhood, if I have specialty programs? So, I am not, I was just going to say it, I'm just not in favor of us closing down high schools. I want us to figure out how to utilize those high schools, and put programs into those high schools. That's, you know, that's my position unless, right now, around that. There was a question around, why aren't we, what happened to those schools, you know, like Meadows Elementary? And I had to do some research and figure out, and I listened to Scott's presentation, I listened to Dr. DePree's presentation on that. I talked to people who were on the committees the last time, to try to get an understanding of, how did we get here? Right? And we, last week, we had a conversation around budget. We're going to be voting on, I think, voting on it later on. There was a $1 billion proposal to do all those fixes of different schools, and putting new construction and whatnot, but it didn't pass. It was cut in half. And so that, when I heard that, that put a lot of things into perspective for me, of, it's not just that we, we, or the board at the time, just wanted to neglect, you know, certain schools, but the community has to support the bonds. If you want all this work done, you got to support all the dollars. And we, we spend taxes, not just for our community, our taxes go all to Fort Ben County. And when I look at some of these comments, it, it really disturbs me. Some of them, I appreciate the well-thought-out comments, I think someone, I think they've shared that with us. But we have to do what's best for Fort Ben ISD, not just my neighborhood. Now, what does that mean? There's a lot of things to consider with the different schools that are already there, the ability to walk. I think someone said, their children to walk to schools, the highways that are there, you know, the safety risks that they do put on our kids if they're walking and driving, or, or riding bikes, you know, the cost of busing our kids to certain types of schools. This is not an easy task. But I wanted to make sure I, I said that I'm not for just, oh, my kid can't go to that school because it's on that side, or not. We've got to really do what's best for our kids to have the best education that they possibly can, in this wonderful Fort Ben ISD district. And we're going to be mailing, mailing on this a little bit longer, and I have tons of other comments, but I think I'm going to get off my little soapbox for a little bit, and look forward to hearing more about the options. And I do read all the emails that come, you know, because it gives me perspective and understanding, so, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Heliger. Mr. George.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just wanted to simply make, I'm not going to get into the details of it, specifics, but I remember, you know, one of the reasons I got on this board was, as a parent, I didn't like when, just Ms. Tassan mentioned in the past, we did, you know, rezoning without, as a parent, my knowledge, and we got a postcard saying that, you know, oh, this is where your kid is going to be zoned next year. And I, I hated it, and, and I'm sure we all do. So, I'm, I'm glad we are having this conversation, I'm, I'm so glad, I know that every one of us here, you know, agree with that, and, and so it is hard. A couple of things I just wanted to mention here, I see a number of recommendations recommending building larger elementary schools. We are planning a number 51 right now, maybe this question goes to Oscar. Do you know what capacity we are looking to build that?
Yes, sir, it is 850 with a thousand core. And, and also, if I may, I want to go, go ahead and just clarify, I said 30 million, but Thornton Middle School is actually 58 million.
Okay.
I checked online.
Okay. And is that fair to say that building a high school is close to 100 million right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And also, another question, probably I have, do we consider, or we are, we are thinking about having spaces available based on our need? We could add addition to the building, you know, new design and stuff, so when you don't need it, maybe we could remove it, things of that nature. Have you ever looked into that kind of stuff? I hope you understand what I'm saying.
Each elementary that we're designing right now has a designated area for an addition, and then also, we have a designated area for portables.
Okay. Okay. So we are looking in that. And, and another question, maybe about these generated surveys, and I think we need to decide how we are going to treat that, because I don't know, it is added as 2,000 or 3,000 surveys, right? Is that right?
Could you repeat?
I'm talking about generated, you know, like computer-generated surveys. So how we are going to treat that, because that's not the real reflection of the community, or a real reflection of what we intend to do, and already, Mr. Rosenthal mentioned about it, and which is, honestly, that's not the purpose of this process, so how we are going, is there any thought about it?
I understand. One of the ways that Scott's been able to present that information, and will be sharing it with the Steering Committee, is being able to isolate, so that you can see those that were generated very quickly, and go toward those IP addresses that we saw multiple responses coming from. So we'll be able to talk through that with the Steering Committee. Scott, do you want to add anything to that?
No, you got it. We, we have all the data that we can, we can sort and filter by IP address, and see all the results on the fly, or even use the duration like we have before.
Okay. Okay. I, I just wanted to conclude saying that, you know, I appreciate everybody being here, and, you know, I'm, I, I really like this process, and I know we, it's not comfortable, you know, it is not a pleasant conversation, but I'm very excited to see that we are having this conversation, so that we could move forward as one Fort Ben ISD. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. George. Mr. Rice.
I would like to begin by agreeing with Ms. Heliger, and I think that everybody here would agree, that to the extent possible, we want every single elementary school child to be able to walk or ride their bicycle to school. Middle school, the orbit gets a little bit wider, and high school, wider still. And to the extent possible, I don't think any of us want to close any schools. Some people may say, well, how did we get here? And so I'm going to give you a brief history lesson, because my wife and I moved here in 1981. Some people have been here before then. And back then, Fort Ben ISD was, and the county, the county had 289,000 people in it when we first moved here in 1981. And today, it has over 720,000 people, and it's going to hit a million. And so on the one hand, we talk about, oh, we're, we're really excited to live in Fort Ben County, it's one of the fastest-growing counties in the United States of America. But with that growth comes a lot of challenge, and that challenge is to keep up with some neighborhoods which are aging in place. That means the, the children have grown up, and the parents haven't moved, and it might take 40 years to regenerate a school, regenerate the student population in a school. Takes about 40 years, maybe 45. Nevertheless, we are doing all of this for a purpose, and that is leading up to a bond, which I believe the administration may ask us to, the board, to vote on in November, or we would probably have to vote in August in order to have an election in November. And this might be the last chance that we have to pass a bond for probably another two years, because the governor is proposing for a bond to pass, 30% of all registered voters within the political subdivision must vote. And then, in order to pass a bond, a super two-thirds majority have to approve it. And we don't see voter turnout like that, except in a presidential election. So were that to occur, and we don't have a bond election this year, we'll have to wait two more years for the next presidential election, and if it were to continue, we could only pass a bond every four years. So that is the challenge that we have. We bought the land for Ann Sullivan in 2012. It was $2.50 a square foot. And back in the day, we were getting land for less than a dollar a square foot, but that has changed, and there's less land. And today, we're paying $3.50 a square foot, if you can find it. We, we'll get to a point where the only option available to us would be the use of eminent domain, which nobody really wants to do, because it's very difficult. So, the other thing that I would like to say is that, as we get to a point where our schools, Meadows Elementary School being one of them, 45 years of age, that's pretty old, and school districts are constrained in their maintenance and operating budget. 86% of our budget goes to teacher salaries and, and benefits, employee salaries and benefits. And some are proposing that we have a cap of 2.5% on all property tax revenue. The, the bulk of our budget comes from everybody in Fort Ben ISD. When I got on the board in 2010, 52% of our revenue came from local property taxes, and 48% came from the state. And today, it's almost 70% from y'all, and me, and everybody here, and 30% from the state. That's because the state supplants our tax revenue, so that they don't have to spend money out of their own pocket to fund programs. That puts, and since our, our core business is to teach kids, we have to maintain buildings, but our core business is to teach kids. There's a teacher shortage. We have to pay salaries and benefits that are commensurate with the going rate, or we're going to lose teachers. And so sometimes, that, that makes it very difficult for us to do all the maintenance that we really want to do. And so when a school gets to be 45 years of age, we're really better off, in my view, of replacing it with a new school, based on new standards and everything else. If you look back in time, you'll see how the evolution of, of school design philosophy has changed. From schools that were, 60 years ago, they might have started out at 40,000 square feet, and they have gotten bigger over time, because there are economies of scale. And Sullivan, for example, has 1,200 students in it. That's a huge elementary school. It's really two schools in one. But all it takes is money. All it takes is money. So, I, I will tell you that the board, well, I'll speak for myself, but I know that everybody on the board still believes that it's important for us to have neighborhood schools, because the schools do represent the hopes and dreams of every parent everywhere, for their child to get a good education and have a good life. And we support that, too. So next time we meet, and I hope that you come again, as Mrs. Tassan said, we usually don't have this much company, but I'm glad you're here. And so next time, we'll have School Finance 101 for you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Burdine.
Thank you, Mrs. Tassan. I'd also like to thank all of you for being here this evening, and taking time out of your daily schedule to, to attend. We appreciate all of your feedback. I wanted to first start off by thanking our administration and Scott. I feel like that we were put in a position that was easy to explain, from a board's perspective. I mean, we, we empowered the community. As Mrs. Tassan said, we didn't have to do this, but I feel good that we did it, because we empowered our community. I'll also echo what Mr. Rosenthal said. I'm also a little disappointed that some people took advantage of that power that we gave the community. And I, I know that we'll be able to overcome that. I'm speaking for myself, but I would assume someone would agree with me on this, but we are looking for long-term solutions, obviously on a limited budget. And it makes it tough, but once again, we're in the business of educating children, and I feel that we will do everything in our power to make sure that we will do the best job that we can. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burdine. Mrs. James.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Tassan. And I guess I would say thank you to Mrs. Martinez and Mr. Leopold for their tremendous amount of work, and for all the E-Team Who was involved in all those community meetings. I saw you guys out there many times. I guess the other, I want to echo many of the things that my colleagues have said I, I agree with. We're working on a, on a long-term plan to address long-term needs, things that are appropriate to finance over a long period of time. And I know that we want to be mindful of populations as they change and grow, as we're making these plans. And so, I want to echo a particular thing that Mr. Rice said. He talked about neighborhoods. And so, um, I wanna echo a particular thing that Mr. Rice said, he talked about neighborhoods, um, neighborhoods regenerating, um, and turning over, and I think that that is, that's a thing that we need to consider, uh, and plan for. Uh, so, I, I think I, too, would say I'm not in favor of closing elementary schools because, um, we need to be planning for the future, um, and not cutting off our nose despite our face, I guess, would be a way to phrase that. And I think also, if we have elementary schools, and this is echoing something you said, Ms. Heliger, if we have elementary schools, and I'm thinking elementary in particular, but if we have declining populations, then we need to look at why that's happening, um, and is there something that we're not doing? Is there strengthening of academic programs? Is there resources that we're not providing that's causing those neighborhoods to not turn over, uh, the same way that other neighborhoods might? So, I guess that would be one of my comments. Um, and I believe, Mrs. Martinez, we have a policy that speaks to the concept of neighborhood schools and choices that we make around that, and I'm assuming that that policy is gonna be part of the conversation when you, when the steering committee is, um, is discussing the, the plans, right?
Yes, ma'am, that is accurate. Policy FC Local guides school attendance areas. And should, um, part of the recommendation, or any of the recommendations, lead to any boundary discussion or redrawing of boundaries, that would be a different and standalone process involving community engagement and guided by FC Local.
Okay, so that's a really good point, because, as we said, we're looking at, we're looking at long-term plans, and some of those might mean boundary, attendance boundary changes two, three, five years out, and we, and I know when we did this last time, we tried to anticipate what that might look like in kind of a long-term, a long-term flow, and I assume that same, that same thing will happen this time.
That is accurate.
Okay, and so then, with regard to that, I do wanna comment, I think Mr. Leopold maybe read this, or, and I've experienced it myself, that some of these neighborhoods that have experienced multiple openings, I, I would ask for the, um, committee to be mindful of, of that situation. Um, that's not an ideal situation for kids to go to multiple elementary schools, uh, in their short elementary career. Um, so, to me, that's a priority. Uh, and then, there was a comment I wanna get an interpretation on, on page four, I think it's on page four, that's the page number I wrote down. There was a comment about keeping academies in the status quo, or keep academies status quo. How do you guys interpret that? What is, what does that mean to you?
I interpret that as keeping them distributed the way that they're currently distributed and not consolidated.
Okay, so not consolidate, but we still understand that academies and programs are portable, um, from school to school, and that's in board policy?
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, I just wanted to provide, think about that clarification. And thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, for asking about the cost of the schools, 'cause I think that's an important piece of information for us. So, thank you, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I'm gonna wrap up by being a little more specific, because I wanna ask particularly our steering committee members to think about a few things that I've been thinking about. And I think it's important for you guys to hear it, it doesn't mean that, that I'm for or against it, but these are the things I'm thinking about. Before I do that, my, my first question for you, Scott, if, in, in the Ridge Point feeder pattern, if we split the middle schools between Sixth, Seventh, Eighth, and Ninth, how much time does that buy us before we are back here doing this again?
Um, I, I think it's five years. And that's, and that's given, and that's given that we have to do some work on Thornton to reprogram it to increase its capacity.
Okay, so I'd like to know that for sure, because I recall it being about three years.
Okay.
But, so I'd like to know for sure what the timing is, because one of my concerns is, being in place a change like that, that doesn't buy us more than, than about three years, or even four, or even five years. And then, we're back here having to move kids again because of the exponential growth that's going on in that particular area. Um, so, that's one thing that, that troubles me. In the interest of longer-term solutions, um, as, as much as we can, that's what I'm looking for and thinking about. Um, one of the parking lot ideas, I'm gonna just throw it out there, was my idea, um, for the Ridge Point feeder pattern, and that was splitting the schedule. Um, I haven't talked to our academic, um, curriculum people about that yet, but one of the things that, um, got me thinking about that is that we're talking about programming and being able to do some innovative things in education, and being able to push towards the future of education with virtual classrooms, or online learning, or all of these things that are the future of education. And I feel like this is something we should be thinking about, because it, it might provide, um, a solution on two fronts. One, we don't have to move kids, um, which we've heard a lot of no rezoning. Uh, and, and Scott and I talked about how long that would be, and we went out ten, twelve, thirteen years of not having to rezone kids. Um, and then, the second thing it perhaps provides is, um, is that programming piece that we're looking for, try some new and innovative things. And maybe this is a pilot-type thing. So, that's just something I'm thinking about, that, that maybe, um, maybe we, you know, we can prevent having to move kids if kids don't wanna have to move. So, that's, that's one thing I wanted to throw out there. Um, I wanna know, we have this answer, Scott, but if we have a dedicated GT Academy, how much will that really relieve the other middle schools? Um, I haven't heard any numbers on that, I would like for you guys to, to get that data and consider that. Um, because we talked about having the Erlich College High School, um, but as Scott pointed out, that's really not gonna relieve the Ridge Point problem in that area. Um, so, how much would a standalone GT Academy, uh, relieve the middle schools? Um, not that I think it's a bad idea, I think we've got some GT things we're trying to work now as, in the district, and, um, and I have a daughter that's gifted, and I know how important it is for that to be a cohort, so, um, but I'm just curious of how much that will really relieve middle schools. Um, I also wanna throw out there that a few years ago, I don't know how many of you were in this room a few years ago, when, and I was on the, I was on the first facilities planning committee, and we talked about the issue of the academy programs impacting top ten percent at those schools and GPAs at those schools. Um, I just want, I would like for you guys to talk about that and consider that. When you're talking about consolidating or not consolidating, that was an issue that came up, is that when kids, when we put a program in a school, um, the zoned kids are impacted, uh, their GPAs are impacted. And so, I think that that's something that needs to be considered, um, when we talk about consolidating or not consolidating. Um, the other thing, and Ms. Heliger and I were talking, how the, the literacy comments, Scott, that you read, I think it was in the Marshall or the Willow Ridge feeder pattern, there was a comment about literacy, and we just discussed that, and, and passed a new literacy, um, program, or, yeah, that we're gonna be doing tonight, if it passes. Um, and we talked about dedicating an elementary school for that versus having the program in, in several schools. And really, when you guys are, are mulling some of these things over, I think, you know, we, literacy is one of those things that is, is an issue in some of our schools, particularly our schools that have, um, populations that struggle. And I think when we're talking about, I'm kinda with everybody up here, nobody likes to close a school. Um, and I don't think anybody up here wants to do that, but how can we utilize the buildings we have for maybe some of those programs that are so important? And I'll say at the outset, I'm not for segregating our students with disabilities. Anybody who knows me, I have a kid with disabilities, I fight for inclusion, so, just, just full disclosure there, that's, that's not one of those things. But, but our, our literacy-type programs we've talked about and things like that, I'd like for that to be considered. Um, and then, finally, I, I would, you know, I would support what Ms. Heliger had to say. Um, I opened one of the Title I, uh, campuses, elementary schools as PTO president, and served there, was very honored to serve there for three years. And so, I know firsthand about, um, you know, kids who struggle. And you can have the best principal in the world, you can have the best teachers in the world, and kids are gonna struggle, because kids have things that they're dealing with outside of school, and those kids are gonna struggle. So, all three of my kids went to that school, and I have a gifted kid who went to that school, and she did great, because there were great teachers and a great principal. And those kids still struggle, and it's still, if you would go out and look at the ratings, you would see it rated as a quote "D" school, that's how it would be rated. And the amount of money and resources and time we poured in for those children, and they're, and they did grow, they did, they did improve, they did progress. But no matter what, they were dealing with things outside of that building that are very difficult for the education system, needs that the education system just simply can't meet. Um, and we're working on some things in Fort Bend, I want, since we have an audience, I want you guys to know that we're working on needs assessments and bringing in collaborative communities to support our kids at home, and to help provide them a better opportunity to learn when they come to school. But I just want us to be mindful that when we talk about schools, we're talking about kids, and a lot of kids who struggle, and it doesn't mean that it's not a good school, because we have a lot of teachers who pour their heart and souls into schools that have student populations who struggle. So, I just wanna say that because, um, you have firsthand experience with it, and it hurts me a little bit, um, when we talk about kids like that. So, these are very difficult decisions, um, we are about to go into closed session, and I'm sure some of the board members will make themselves available. Um, and we appreciate, again, all of you being here this evening, and we really do take it seriously, and we're gonna work really hard to make the best decisions we can for all the kids. With that being said, we are now gonna convene and close session, um, under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Government Code, Chapter Five, Five-One, and those sections listed in the agenda, and, uh, for private, purpose of private information with the board's attorney on any or all subjects or matters authorized by law. We are now convening and close session. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.